Supervisor Brown is delayed by a pre-arrangement. She should arrive shortly. Supervisor Jordy?
Here.
Supervisor Kroski?
Here.
Supervisor Hamburg?
Here.
Chair McCowen.
Here. We will now go to, oh, excuse me. I would like to invite District Attorney Eister to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now I would invite public expression. For any items not on today's agenda, please come forward.
Good morning, Board. This, I'm Dave Eister, the District Attorney. In public expression, I'd like to share with you a copy of just one article that was in a recent media account. It has to do with it has to do with a recent fire department and law investigation in Brook Trails that had relating to an explosion. It continues to be the law in California that chemical extraction labs, and when we say that, we mean BHO, butane honey oil, alcohol, propane, whatever your chemical extraction mechanism is, is a very serious, very high punishment felony. I encourage this board to continue to discourage this activity. It is a blight on our landscape and a severe public safety to our communities. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board under public expression? Please come forward.
Good morning and thank you, Chair Tom Allman, Sheriff. I certainly did not talk to District Attorney before he came in this morning about the subject, but the honey oil labs as we know them, and we've had people in this very boardroom talking about the safe extraction of THC from marijuana, such as the explosion that happened in Willets where containers were, containers were put under 2,000 PSI and an explosion occurred. And now the victims of this burn that happened in Brook Trails, it's very important to understand this, were not just the people who were doing the honey oil lab. This was a fourplex with a family of five next door, and now we have a family of five receiving burns because some rocket scientist watched YouTube and decided that he was going to chemically extract THC from marijuana. And so, as you've heard me say many times, people who follow the law, I, we support, the District Attorney and I will support people who follow the law, but there seems to be this, this percentage of them always pushing the envelope, always pushing the envelope and not scared of the consequences. And so, I'm going to bet, once again, my prediction is that in January, when we start looking at the 2018 and 2019 policies and procedures and laws and ordinances with marijuana, there's going to be people standing at this very podium stating that these were exceptions, these explosions were the exceptions, but we should still go ahead and recognize a chemical extraction of THC from marijuana. There's really and truly very few ways to safely extract THC from marijuana. So don't just take the word from people when they try to convince you that you should allow it. The chemical extraction of marijuana is the cheapest way to do it. The more expensive way is to use dry ice or to use other non-volatile chemicals, but they don't want to do that because it's some money involved. So please stand your ground. Please plant your banner in this ground and say, if you're going to follow the state law, then follow the state law, and our county ordinances are going to also emulate the state law. But these are people who are dangerous. These are, let me clearly say this, the peak, what happened in Brook Trails, nobody in this room would want to have as their neighbors. And we have to do better. It's not your fault, let me tell you. You guys have held the line when it comes to chemical extraction. I just don't want you to cross the line of saying, yes, we're going to do it under certain circumstances. The answer is no. Very clearly, the answer is no. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else for public expression items not on the agenda? Seeing no one, come forward. We will go to the consent calendar, and we have only one item on consent, the approval of an MOU with Coyote Valley. Excuse me.
Yes, proper notice was established.
Oh, thank you. Karly keeps me in line here. So I would invite a motion to the consent calendar, and then we can take public comment, if any.
I'll move the item, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Supervisor Hamburg, second by Supervisor Kroski, and we will now take public comment to the consent calendar.
Good morning. My name is Michael Hunter. I'm the tribal chairman of the Coyote Valley Band of Pomo Indians. And Chairman, thank you for the tough negotiations we've done. You know, it's not always easy, but it was most definitely successful, and I thank you for your vote today. I truly believe that this MOU is a model MOU, not only for tribes, but the counties. Far too often, we go, we go so far apart that we can't meet in the middle, and we let courts decide things. And it's really a good feeling when I know that my county board supervisor supports my tribe and what we're doing. So I really do appreciate all of you, and thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment? Okay, thank you.
Chair, I certainly appreciate what Mr. Hunter and the tribe is doing out there, and I appreciate the tough negotiations that happened. The sheriff's office was left out of all negotiations of an MOU with a casino, and that, I, believe me, at budget time, I will remind this board that the sheriff's office was left out of all negotiations. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That aside, I do think the MOU is appropriate, and I think that the tribe is to be congratulated for the quality of their previous development with the convenience store. They've made a commitment to build the new development to that same level of quality, and I do think this represents significant economic development for the tribe and will also have benefits to the general community. Any further comments? So we will vote by the button.
Motion carries with Supervisor Brown absent.
Thank you. With that, we will now go to a closed session item pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9A, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Amanda Karly versus Mendocino County et al. So let's convene immediately in closed session. Closed session item, which was pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9A, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Amanda Karly versus Mendocino County et al. Direction was given to staff. We will now go to Item 5A, discussion and possible adoption of a resolution approving side letters of agreement between the county of Mendocino and each of the Mendocino County bargaining units for the term of October 8th, 2017 through June 30th, 2018, which allows emergency leave donations to the Catastrophic Leave Bank, an emergency vacation cash out to employees who are victims of the Redwood Complex fire, and to temporarily increase the flexible time off accrual limit for exempt employees who are providing mutual aid as a result of the Redwood Complex fire, subject to agreement from the bargaining units. The Executive Office and Human Resources are the sponsors, and I will go to CEO Angelo to introduce them.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Chair McCowen. I'm pleased that our Human Resources Director Heidi Dunham is bringing this item forward and bringing it forward so quickly. This is very much what we did with the Valley Fire, though I have to say that Ms. Dunham has moved down the road on this, and it's much appreciated. I also would like the board to know that during the fires, the department heads were keeping track of their employees who were either evacuated or unfortunate, lost their homes. And what we have is, we have a list of our staff that was evacuated, and we had over 127 of the county staff that were evacuated, and we have 14 employees who either lost their housing or lost their homes. So we will be working with the departments to see what else we could do for our employees, particularly those that have lost their homes. And at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Dunham. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair McCowen, members of the board. Heidi Dunham, Human Resources Director. This morning, we have this side letter for possible adoption, and I'm pleased to let you know that all of the bargaining units have signed off on the side letter. So it includes emergency leave donations that employees can make to an emergency leave bank, and also the opportunity for people who are directly affected by the fire, our employees, to request leave, leave time if they are out of hours and needed to take extra time off. They would be able to tap into those donated hours. It also has a provision for people directly affected by the fire to be able to cash out up to 160 hours of vacation that they might have in their leave bank. Right now, most bargaining units can cash out 80, and this doubles that for the people who are affected by the fire directly. Also increases the flexible time off leave bank or our accrual bank for our exempt employees who have been working on the fire. I know we have many employees who are working 20-hour days there for a while, so this is a way for them to bank some of those hours, to be able to take some much-needed time off when the time comes.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Supervisor Jordy?
Maybe could just repeat the numbers? So there were 100 and how many that were evacuated?
Yes.
And how many lost homes?
Sure. We had 127 employees evacuated and, and 14 employees who lost their homes.
Okay. And then just for clarification, this, also employees who were not evacuated but were called to other assignments because of the fires, they are, they would also be eligible for the time bank shift?
No, this is for people who had to take time off because they were evacuated or lost their home.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Any public comment? Seeing no one come forward, I would just add my thanks to those of the CEO for you bringing this forward so quickly. Motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
A motion by Supervisor Jordy, second by Supervisor Hamburg. We will vote by the button.
Motion carries with Supervisor Brown absent.
Thank you. We will now go to Agenda Item Number 5B, discussion and possible action to amend the Board of Supervisors' master meeting schedule, adding a potential regular meeting, meeting on October 31st, 2017, and/or other dates as directed by the board. The Executive Office is the sponsor. CEO Angelo?
Thank you, Chair McCowen. This is exactly what the title says. We would like to add October 31st as a regular board meeting, add it to the master calendar. We are planning on doing the fee hearing on that date, and so if this board pleases, if we can add it to the calendar, that would be really helpful.
Thank you. And then, of course, we've previously directed that the fire recovery effort be a standing agenda item, so we'd have the opportunity for further updates and direction
That's right.
On that as well. Board members? Members of the public? Seeing no one come forward, back before the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we amend the 2017 master meeting schedule to add a meeting on, a regular meeting on October 31st, 2017.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Supervisor Hamburg, second by Supervisor Kroski. Further discussion? We will vote by the button.
Motion carries with Supervisor Brown absent.
Thank you. We will now go to Agenda Item Number 5C, discussion and possible action regarding updates associated with fire recovery efforts in Mendocino County. The Executive Office is the sponsor at the direction of the board, and I will turn to CEO Angelo to introduce the item.
Thank you, Chair McCowen. I will start on this item. Along with me today will be Tammy Moss Chandler and Nash Gonzalez. As directed by this board, staff will be giving a recovery update at each board meeting, and, you know, realistically, recovery could take a couple of years, so we will apprise this board until directed otherwise. You know, and as a, as a start, I would like to really thank all the county staff involved in recovery, and I'm, you know, not certain that certainly the public is aware of the multiple county staff that are actually undertaking this, this challenge. We have our planning department, certainly our building official, environmental health, our ag department, the assessor, the treasurer, the auditor, the Executive Office, Health and Human Services, and all departments that are engaged in this process. And as the board knows, I have appointed a recovery director as the recovery phase moves forward, and that is Tammy Moss Chandler. She's agreed on a temporary reassignment from Health and Human Services to the Executive Office to manage recovery. Ms. Chandler, Ms. Chandler is located now in the Executive Office, and my office will be supporting the recovery efforts going forward. Additionally, Nash, Nash Gonzalez is critical to the recovery process for his many years of experience and expertise, and he will be working lockstep with Ms. Chandler as we move through the debris cleanup, reentry, and housing. State and federal resources continue to support our efforts, and we'll be working with both FEMA and Cal OES to find suitable office space for 20 to 30 additional FEMA and state staff to serve our public going forward. I really want everybody to hear this. We have an additional 20 to 30 staff from Cal OES and FEMA who will be here in this county, and they will be working on, working with us and also serving the public. What I really want the board to know is, given the space availability or the lack of, we may utilize the Sonoma County model and work with Cal OES to set up a tent in our parking lot. Cal OES sets up a tent and utilizes the National Guard to manage the tent, including 24-hour security. While this, when, when we spoke, when Ms. Chandler and I met with Cal OES and they were describing this, it seemed somewhat extreme. However, if we had to find space for 20 to 30 county staff right now, it would be a difficult process. So in thinking of what they are doing in Sonoma County and how this is working, it's quite possible that that will be our option, that we will have Cal OES come in with the National Guard, set up a tent in the parking lot. And because it is an outside area, there will be security with the National Guard. There will be computers in there. Basically, they will be working to, to support the county and to support the recovery efforts. If we don't find a space and we do the tent, we will notify the board and the public before the tent goes up. Apparently, it is working in Sonoma County. I am not aware, when we spoke with Cal OES, I'm not aware of, of a lot of angst from the public down there to have this tent with the National Guard. Actually, they have more than one. I think they have three tents. So we would be talking one, and so I, again, I, I want the board to be aware of this. Moving forward, while the fire is contained, Cal Fire is still here and working in partnership with us. The sheriff's office remains available to assist with recovery efforts and is also available to provide the sheriff's tent for recovery for Redwood Valley this evening if needed. There is a meeting that Supervisor Carrie Brown will be chairing along with the Redwood Valley Municipal Advisory Committee this evening at 6:00. And all of our recovery staff will be there. We are part of the meeting. We are not the meeting. It is a MAC meeting. However, we have been invited to come and talk about recovery. Additionally, Ms. Chandler will have staff there, and Nash will have staff there an hour before and an after, an hour after the meeting to meet with staff. What we're attempting to do is get the write-of-entry forms signed, and, and I don't want to go into too much detail because Tammy and Nash will be talking about that. Our local assistance center, which is still located at Mendocino College, that continues to help many families with resources. Yesterday, 58 families came through the local assistance center. Before we even opened the doors, we had 300 applications that were received online to FEMA before the LAC even opened. So we are making arrangements for this level of assistance for our fire victims even after the LAC closes. And, and Tammy will talk more about that. So along with the local assistance center, recovery activities include completing the disaster response paperwork, working to finalize the Emergency Operations Center activities, working with county staff to complete time sheets for FEMA reimbursement, that is very important, and now extensive work with the State Department of Toxic Substance Control and the Army Corps of Engineers. FEMA staff and others to provide information and debris cleanup services. And again, you'll hear more about this from Ms. Chandler, our recovery director, and Nash Gonzalez, our planning director. You'll also see more staff in and around the Executive Office as additional resources are needed to implement and manage a successful disaster recovery. Lastly, you have a chart in front of you with your directives from the last board meeting. I would like to go over those directives, and these directives will be implemented as staff completes them. It's important for the board and the public to understand that we have moved into recovery, and right now, we're on debris removal and reentry. We will be focused soon on labor, local hiring, and the multiple and complex housing issues. So my hope is that the board will continue making policy changes that will support rebuilding our communities and assist with economic development. We know that we're in a time right now where the only thing that could really work is people helping people, and we're working with our community-based organizations right now to keep the public engaged with our fire victims who are neighbors. We know what happens in a disaster, everybody's around for the first 30, 60, 90 days, and then the next disaster comes and everybody moves to that. And right now, we know that, that our neighbors who have been burnt out of their homes, they will, they will be going through this for the next couple of years, and we want to make sure that not only the county, but that our community-based organizations have the support from us to work on people helping people. If we could go to the directives chart, you should have it. I'm not certain if there are copies in the back of the room. There are, okay, great. So these are the directives that came out of the October 17th board meeting, and we can, we can go through these if the board chooses. And you can see that the first one was urgency ordinance from, that county council was asked to draft regarding price gouging, and county council will bring this before the board on October 31st for first reading.
I had a question on that one, and county council has a comment, so.
I would just like to acknowledge that Supervisor Brown has now joined us in the room, so.
Thank you. So on the urgency ordinance for price gouging, one question was, because I believe there is state legislation on that, so what options does the county have to add to that? Is it in the nature of what penalties can be specified, or what are the differences?
That's correct, Supervisor, Chair McCowen. And what we did was, we did use the example from Lake County in terms of extending the penalties. That will come before the board on the 31st. I have reviewed that with DA Eister, and so it's just, it's bringing more attention to the rental property issue and also increasing the, the fines, basically, is what we're looking at.
Well, I think it, it's not just limited to landlords renting property. I think it relates to contractors or anyone else, price gouging potentially.
And that's what this is covering, but again, again, modeling after sort of what Lake County did. The focal point is to, is the housing issue, but it also includes the other items. And again, those are included in the penal code section already, and those have been already extended by the governor, so that's, it's already gone out to April, I think it's 14th, 2018. And so we're just modeling after what the state is already doing, but increasing our own local penalties.
Right. Other comments by the board? Other comments by staff?
I think we need to, excuse me, Mr. Chair, just to, just to note that gouging is not gauging. G-O.
Thank you.
Good catch.
Thank you, Supervisor Hamburg.
Wouldn't like us to just keep repeating that. Sorry.
Spell check is tricky.
Spell check. Gauging is a real word, though.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, please go ahead.
No, no, I appreciate that. Shall we move on? Okay. Okay, let's see what else we could find as we go through this document.
But the main point there is price gouging is illegal, and we are bringing forward an ordinance to increase the penalties.
Yes.
Yeah, great. Okay. The second one is that staff should work with North Coast Builders Exchange to help provide appropriate information regarding local contractors available for fire victims at the local assistance center. And I have spoken with Lee Howard twice now, and I will leave that. I know Mr. Howard is here, so as, after we go through these, he may, he may want to address that item, if, if that's okay with the board. The third one is the board is supportive of
May I?
Supervisor Brown.
And we also need to make sure we have the number available for anyone that is meeting with a contractor, to be able to call the state licensing board to find out that all their licensing is up to date, that they are licensed as a contractor.
All right. Thank you. The next one is that staff should meet with the Redwood Valley Water Conservation District regarding moratorium on water restrictions and report back to the board on either October 24th or October 31st, and I will leave that up to Nash and Tammy to speak on here in a few minutes. And the next directive was staff to research FEMA requirements and draft a letter to local hotels encouraging them to register with FEMA so rooms may be utilized as temporary housing for fire victims. And you can see that Ms. Chandler has worked on that and could speak more to that.
Oh, okay.
What I'd like to do, if it's okay with the board, is just go through the directives and then turn it over to Ms. Chandler and Mr. Gonzalez, if that's okay with the board.
Certainly, but, you know, there may be questions about some of these as, as we go through the list.
That's absolutely fine.
Okay.
So, so before we move to the second page, are there questions about these directives?
Mr. Chair?
Supervisor Brown.
Thank you. And I just would like to go back up to Redwood Valley
Yes.
County Water District. And I know they held a meeting just this last week, and I don't know if there's information available. I know there will be at Redwood Valley tonight, but some of their infrastructure, like their pumping, one pump was lost, so water pressure, everything else. So we're going to need to engage in that particular item. More information will become available tonight. Hopefully, they're on our agenda. If not, I'll call them up, because that's going to mean a lot to the houses within that particular area as far as water pressure.
Okay. All right, thank you. I don't know if either Tammy or Nash.
First, thank you, Chairman McCowen, members of the board, CEO Angelo. So I know that we have reached out to the Water District around damage assessments already through Rick Ellard is, is my lead right now on initial damage assessments, and that the MAC has invited Mr. Kohler to be there tonight. He's not part of our recovery agenda specifically, really because it's the MAC's meeting tonight, but, but he is planning to be there at the invitation and in coordination with the MAC members.
Okay. And then on the next item, when we talk about local hotels and encourage them to register with FEMA, we need to also encourage the coastal hotels, because many people, they couldn't go any other way but over to the coast.
Right.
And so if we can have a bigger footprint than normal for, for all this for FEMA, due to the lack of so many rooms, you know, there's only so many available to include some of our coastal hotels, I think that is very important.
So on the current FEMA list as of this week, there are So, on the current FEMA list as of this week, there actually are three coastal hotels. And now, there are two, hopefully by today, three, Ukiah Hotels. It has been a big concern because as the fire started, there was only one FEMA-approved hotel in Ukiah. So, we did some individualized outreach, and we're trying to get information to all property owners of how they register with FEMA to be a registered hotel directly with FEMA. And so, we are in contact daily, looking at who else is registered and who else could be.
Great. And residents need to know that are going into these hotels, they do need to keep their receipts because it may be reimbursable through their own insurance.
Supervisor Kroski.
Thank you, Chairman. And the hotels that register, is that limited to just hotels? I know I was at the KOA this weekend, and I talked with several individuals who are staying there at the KOA because they've lost their homes. And I wasn't sure, does that extend to campsites as well?
My current understanding is it doesn't, and that's why we called on West Company to help work on some of these other models. But initially, when you go on, it is designed for hotel owners, and FEMA uses a national contractor. So, we are looking into how to expand that to other kinds of businesses. But it's unclear to me at this time exactly what that process is.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, the first directive on the second page is staff to contact the Farm Bureau to reach out to their membership regarding seasonal agricultural farm work housing availability for fire victims. This was assigned to our Ag Commissioner, Diane Curry. She's not here today. However, she did give us a status update. She did speak with Devin Jones from the Farm Bureau. And she says most seasonal employee housing is being used year-round. An inquiry went out to the membership. And if any housing is available, we will gather that information and submit it to our Recovery Director. So, Tammy, did you get anything else from Ms. Curry on this?
Not specific to seasonal employee housing, but we are trying to start to answer more questions. It's a big goal for this week to coordinate our agricultural opportunities and next steps in a more cohesive way.
Supervisor Brown.
Yes. And my briefing this morning, reason why I'm late, Ms. Jones was also at the briefing at the Potter Valley Fire Department, and she is still working on it. We do have a couple of farm owners that are out of state right now that may have something available. So, she's waiting for them to get back to her.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next two directives actually are for Sherri Schatmeyer, who is here today. The first one is staff to send a letter requesting that owners of short-term rentals who have a business license with us, see if they'd be willing to make their temporary housing available for fire victims. And so, Sherri, you may want to speak on that one. And then the second directive was staff to reach out to the cities to see if they would be willing to send a similar letter to their constituents who might have short-term rentals.
Sherri Schatmeyer, Treasurer, Tax Collector, Chairman McCown, members of the Board. I do need some clarity on this item as far as what the Board is requesting. One thing that I wanted to make sure is that we do, for the Board to know, is that we do have access to all contact information for every lodging establishment inside and outside city limits. So, whatever we can do to help. I wasn't clear as to who was going to write that letter and what exactly all the requests were that were going to be in that letter. Was that something that you wanted me to do, or was the Board going to draft something from the Board of Supervisors to your constituents?
Well, I think the concept is pretty simple, that it would be an appeal. And the way we stated it was intentionally specifically to those who have short-term rentals and, you know, the Airbnb type of thing, asking if they'd make their units available on a limited basis to fire victims, either for six months or a year, or they could put whatever time limit on it they wanted. And if writing the letter is the issue, I would be happy to work with staff to draft a letter. I think the point is to try and get it out as quickly as we can.
Okay. Yeah, I just wasn't clear as to what the intentions of the Board were on that.
Emphasizing the community need, and that, you know, hopefully, people would be willing to assist.
Okay. And are you more particularly, than it sounds like, looking at single-family homes, more so than, because of the bid information that we have, we do have a pretty good idea of the top ones are the hotels. And then, as we move down, those are your single-family homes, your short-term rentals. And so, it sounds like you're more thinking that's the goal, not to anybody that has, not to a hotel.
Well, my thought was more to the single-family homes and, you know.
And that would be an area that we could definitely attempt to target. Not to say that it would be, we might hit somebody who may have three or four or five rooms, but we could definitely hit the single-family homes.
Well, if somebody has, you know, three or four or five single-family homes that they're renting out, yeah, I hope we would be able to hit them. They might be the more willing to make one or two units available. Supervisor Brown?
Yes. And this is actually to this issue, but people have been reaching out that have a bedroom with a bathroom attached, where they would be willing to take someone into their own home. And I think I wrote that down, sent it on to someone. Can't remember who, because this was the height of the incident itself. But maybe another category there that goes along with this is people that are willing to do that.
And in that regard, something like someone who just has a bed and bath in their home, and they're willing to have someone come in that needs assistance, we could talk with North Coast Opportunities that is really handling volunteers and is doing a lot with the community, and see if they want to take that on. Because you're not, we're not talking about, I mean, I think this is a little different.
This is different. It's different.
So, I wasn't, you know, thinking of hotels per se or formal bed and breakfast, but, you know, the private citizen that's, you know, doing a short-term rental. And I think as Supervisor Brown mentions, maybe it wouldn't just be limited to someone who has a single-family home. It could be someone with a detached bedroom, or there are single people that are looking for housing that were affected. So, maybe if someone has a room in their home, you know, who's already renting it out, that might be, you know, I guess I'm saying we ought to be a little more inclusive.
Yes. But it's not the rental type. It's someone opening their home.
Oh, aside from, well, that's something that you might go through NCO on and help publicize.
Yeah, I appreciate that information. Thank you.
Supervisor Kroski.
Thank you. But I think your last statement there, and help publicize, I think that's part of the problem. I mean, if we ask these people to open them, there's not necessarily a good way to connect some of these people with the fire victims looking. So, I don't know if it's difficult to create some type of, you know, a registry of individuals or, you know, business owners that are willing to do this. And that way, you know, we have a list of people who are willing to bring them in. I mean, I don't know if that's, in this letter, we say, hey, are you willing to register as someone who will accept fire?
And it would still be up to the property owner, I think, to approve any individual that they're willing to make this arrangement with. And maybe that's a place where if NCO is willing, maybe they come into the picture to help make those connections. Does that sound reasonable?
Yes, absolutely. And I actually have a call-out to NCO, and they've been busy as well, and they have not been able to meet one-on-one. But I have met with some other community partners. So, this is in the works. So, we'll bring you additional information. But I do think we're talking about two different areas here. So, if Sherri has a list of those that are licensed around either Airbnb or whatever, that that could be sent out. And then this is more of a community effort as far as someone who has a bedroom, an extra bedroom, to have someone stay in.
And I do think you have the capability to separate those out from the more traditional hotels and inns?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Hamburg?
Yeah, I'm just curious as to whether there's a thirty-day limitation on these rentals? I mean, we're talking about the short-term rentals.
For transient occupancy tax, as far as to pay transient occupancy tax, if it's thirty days or less is when they have to pay it. If it's more than that, there's no transient occupancy tax. Right now, in our ordinance, although, you know, we don't really have too many exemptions. And that was another area I was a little unclear of, is if we're asking for people to donate this, or offer it at a reduced rate, or just, you know, what the goal of the Board was. But what'll happen is, as far as the transient occupancy tax, that is still collected if it's thirty days or less. If it's more than that, there is no transient occupancy tax. There are a few exemptions in the code, but none of them address a situation like this. There is one that talks about if the county actually pays the rent for somebody like a needy family, or somebody that has, maybe homeless or whatever, that the transient occupancy tax can be waived in that issue. But as Supervisor Hamburg mentioned, if this is more than a thirty-day rental, there is no transient occupancy tax on whatever that, if it is a reduced fee, whatever that may be.
Yeah, I was just looking for a way that, you know, if a family or an individual moved into one of these units, we wouldn't want them to have to leave after thirty days, presumably.
Well, that's the point, is to create an opportunity for longer-term rentals. And that'd be one of the minor benefits, coming back to the property owner. They wouldn't be having to collect the transient occupancy tax or the Business Improvement District Assessment.
But would they for the first thirty days?
No. Not if the term were for longer than thirty days.
If they entered into it at the beginning, knowing that it was going to be, yeah, thirty, you know, more than thirty days, that wouldn't be attached.
So, if they entered into a month-to-month rental that just rolled over, it wouldn't be subject.
Okay. Well, it sounds like we're willing to cut as much red tape as possible to make these units available. That's my concern.
And so, if there's no objection, I would help draft a letter that would be to the approval of the Treasurer and the CEO.
That's fine, thank you. So, the letter will go from the Board, then? That's fine. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, I also want to make a comment on this, because clearly you see the direction the Board is going on this, that this past week, along with community-based organizations, that my office did meet with one of the faith-based organizations in town that has been doing organizing of the faith-based organizations outside of this effort. And I believe that they are stepping up as well. And so, when you talk about people that have an extra bedroom or whatever, taking fire victims in, I think we will see more from the faith-based organizations. Additionally, West Company would also like to assist with this, along with NCO. And it really is an economic strategy, because we know when homes are burnt to the ground, that not every home is rebuilt. And certainly, it takes a couple of years to rebuild anyway. We lost over three hundred homes. We don't know how many of the people, the families in those homes will actually rebuild and stay in our community. So, how we keep our community engaged with those fire victims, so they know that we're here to assist, is also something that I think our community-based organizations and our faith-based organizations could work on.
And while you're mentioning other entities that are willing to help, the City of Ukiah, through Mayor Jim Brown and City Manager San Jacomo, have made it clear that they're willing to cooperate in any way they can to help with the fire recovery effort. And, you know, obviously, one of the most critical issues is around housing. So, some of these urgency measures that we're discussing for the county, perhaps the city would be willing to help with some of those things also. So, I think as we go forward, we ought to have an active dialogue with all of the parties that have indicated a willingness to help.
Thank you.
Supervisor Kroski.
Just to take the housing a little step further, I mean, I think one of the shortfalls of bringing someone into your house at this point is, at the moment, it won't matter. But as we move into summer, you know, there are a lot of penalties for increased water use. And I think that that's something that we need to look at as we move forward, is, you know, a lot of these water companies, there's pretty stiff penalties if you go over what your water limitations are. And if we start bringing whole families into someone else's house, I just think that's something we need to look at.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes. And there is a distinction between, you know, the private companies-
Correct.
-versus a county district.
Well, and I think that can be part of the discussion, particularly in Redwood Valley, with the Redwood Valley County Water District.
And actually, the Chair of the Redwood Valley County Water District just walked in. I can see him looking up.
I don't know if we want to go back to that item.
We can at the end, I think.
Do you have a copy of the various, do you have a copy of the various items the Board has given direction on, and then we're having it for fire recovery? We're getting a report back. Is there a copy in the back?
Should be in the back.
It's in the binder. And-
Chairman McCown, as we get a copy, shall I go on until Mr. Poole has the time to even look at it? So, okay. The next item is the staff shall create a standing item for the next few months. And Janelle Rall has done that, so that will be on every Board meeting agenda. And the next one is actually planning and building. I will turn-
Well, we kind of skipped over the CAL FIRE, I think.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, my, yes, you're right.
And the big deal there, working with CAL FIRE, of course, regarding the possibility of doing assessments, the big deal was to make sure that there is a uniform marking system. I think that was the central direction of the Board, that if possible, we would have that.
Tammy, did you want to?
I'll speak. I can speak to that. So, I actually probably should go back and clarify a little bit about uniform markings. But I did speak personally with Chief Gonzalez yesterday, now that he's back in his post. And we talked about tree removal and the information that he's sharing through his team with our Natural Resources Conservation Service, because they're actually doing the assessments. Typically, CAL FIRE isn't involved in tree removal. They really get involved with watershed team management and not as much with trees through the entire area. So, I think there's probably more information to be gleaned here, but that was the initial information that I have.
Supervisor Brown?
Thank you. And I learned from my colleagues sitting on the Rural Counties Association, and those in the last few years that have had horrific fires or dead trees as a result of the drought, that many homeowners do not have the financial ability to remove some of these trees. So, that's something we should be thinking about. I think we're probably luckier is the fact that we have the California Conservation Corps. And we also have a lot of woodcutters. And so, you know, we just need to look outside the box, understanding, like in the Sierras, their particular issues and what those counties are struggling with during their emergency incidents.
Thank you. I never realized how complicated trees could be until this week. But there will be someone with some expertise with us tonight from CAL OES around the complexities of tree removal that might be occurring through PG&E and AT&amp;T for safety right now, the difference when a tree is in a public right-of-way, when a tree is on private property.
Department of Transportation.
And then Nash can speak to some of our concerns, of course, when there are burned trees that are impacted, and how we're working diligently to try to figure out removal to protect our watershed areas, as well as private and public properties.
Well, and again, back to the question of uniform marking, that was one of the points that was emphasized by representatives from Lake County, because you don't want to have one entity coming out thinking a marking means cut the tree down, when it was supposed to mean leave the tree standing. So, and I don't know what Lake County was able to do, if they were able to achieve a uniform marking system, or that maybe we could check with Lake County and see exactly what was the issue. I think I've identified it, and how did they resolve it, if in fact they did.
Okay. And I don't know if either Tammy or Nash have anything else to say on this item. Okay, we will check with Lake County.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, so, the next item is an item from Nash, and that is that planning and building- And that is that planning and building services to present an urgency ordinance, which incorporates an administrative permit, allowing fire victims whose homes have been determined to be inhabitable, to utilize trailer, a trailer, as their residence on their own property or another parcel, for a period of three years, must be self-contained if they cannot connect. You can see it goes on here, to a septic system, if the environmental conditions can be met. And then allow two travel trailers, depending on the number of permitted single-family residences on the site. And I think I'd like to turn this over to Nash, and let us know what you found with your research so far.
Well, and if I may, the initial proposal of the Department, that it be a travel trailer for up to three years, I believe the Board was willing to broaden that, to include a recreational vehicle, and also a mobile home. And then I know you talked about that a little further on, but that's my recollection and notes, is the Board basically wants to allow any form of temporary habitation that could potentially be used.
Thank you.
If I may, through the Chair and Nash Gonzalez. Again, we know the, the urgency of trying to get people back onto their own properties as soon as possible. And so, again, staff has drafted the basic ordinance, has provided it to County Council. County Council has looked at the ordinance, made some modifications, and it's back to us in draft form for us to take a look at. Our goal is to try to get it before the Board on the thirty-first. However, we're, with so many things going on, you know, it is a priority, but we're working on it right now. So staff is, is trying to put the finishing touches on it. We're looking at things like SEQA and so on, to see how density affects, and so on. But one of the things that we heard last week was that, in dealing with the primary unit, secondary unit on the property, if both were burned, then they should be able to have the, the two units replaced with travel trailers. We're also looking at the ability, maybe have a third one on there, for, let's say, a contractor to utilize, and so on. So we're looking at all these different issues, so that, again, we don't get into that wonderful world of SEQA that, that creates an issue for us.
Well, again, specifically, in addition to travel trailers, the Board also gave direction to allow recreational vehicles or mobile homes.
Yes, and, and travel trailers are considered a recreational vehicle.
Okay, thank you. And Supervisor Brown had a question, and then County Council.
Well, actually, it's a statement, because I am aware of homes that have vacant space to be able to house some of these RVs, or a trailer. And this is the initial, you know, incident and emergency, and you have family that drove their trailer or their RV out of Redwood Valley, or Pine Mountain area, that are housing these people right now for the short term. So I don't know, you know, how you do that, but, but, and I don't know what the regulations are for the City of Ukiah or City of Willits. But I do know what's going on right now, and I would hate to see, after what everyone's gone through, I would hate to see someone red-tagged for inappropriate housing within a recreational vehicle on property that was not impacted by the fire. So I, I, you know, I don't know where to go with this, but that's the information I'd like to share for the moment.
Thank you, and I have a comment on that as well, but first, County Council.
So just to be clear, we're using the word "trailer coach", which encompasses the items that you wanted to see encompassed. And that's already defined in another area of the county code, so we're relying on that. Also, been asking the same question as Supervisor Brown, and, and we are allowing for these kinds of situations, in terms of them being able to do that longer term. And also, again, I don't think that's what our code enforcement's going to be trying to go out and, and go after, but.
Well, in fact, we're attempting to specifically create the allowance that a fire victim who's not able to locate a temporary trailer on their own property, could do so on the property of another. And in that instance, you know, the normal zoning restrictions, et cetera, wouldn't apply. The, what would be the determining criteria would be they're a bona fide fire victim. We're gonna have a list of those people who have lost their homes. And then, provided it's not feasible to put that temporary structure on their own property, they could do it anywhere in the unincorporated area of the county, where there was someone willing to accommodate them. I think that's our intention. And I, you know, I believe that's what we discussed at the last meeting, and I'm getting general nods of concurrence. So Director Gonzalez.
Mr. Chair, just something to keep in mind is that a lot of people have been displaced and are, we'll say, camping on other people's property, but their intent is to return back to the property. And there is a provision in the county code that allows camping for up to sixty days in a, in a six-month period, continuous period. So they could be, right now, camping on their, on, on a friend's property, but then, once their site is cleaned up, they would return. And so there is no permit required for that, because it is a temporary use, temporary camping. If they're going to stay long-term, beyond the sixty days, then they're gonna have to follow the administrative permit requirements, and establish under the permit. But we're looking at all these options right now.
Supervisor Security.
I don't, I don't know if we've heard since, since CAL FIRE was here and CAL OES, but have, have they decided whether it will be a FEMA contractor, or whether it will be CAL Recycle that will do the cleanup? And if so, what's the latest on the timeframe for doing that cleanup?
Well, actually, Nash could answer. It's not CAL Recycle, but go ahead, Nash.
So the, who is going to be doing the cleanup is the Army Corps of Engineers. The Army Corps of Engineers, like all our, all our other counties, I believe Orange County is the one that is going to be working with CAL Recycle. Lake, Mendocino, Nap, and Sonoma are going to be under the auspices of the Army Corps of Engineer for cleanup. And initially, what is going to take place is, Department of Toxic Substance is already on the ground right now, as we speak. They're going to be doing the initial surveys for household hazardous waste, and removing household hazardous waste. Once they're done with their sweep, the idea is that these properties would, would be turned over to the Army Corps for cleanup. And again, this was all over the news last night for the Bay Area. They, they did talk about the Army Corps of Engineers being in these four counties.
Supervisor Kroski.
Thank you, Chair. And so the hazardous waste that's getting picked up today, where will that be taken?
That will be taken to a, to staging area in Redwood Valley. They will then remove this off-site. And most of the household hazardous waste will be put in locked bins. Car batteries, household cleaning products, paints, those are the small items that they can pick up. The larger items are, are gonna be removed by the Army Corps of Engineers.
Supervisor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I don't know if it's appropriate now, but I think that we need a bigger discussion on this, and it may be at our next meeting. But I did have a number of phone calls over the weekend from residents that have been burned out, and some stories evidently that have been shared from Lake County, about the Corps of Engineers, and who's gonna have oversight when they're going in. It's concern about septic lines, infrastructure that was not destroyed. So, I mean, there's quite a few issues. I know you're gonna hear it tonight, probably in some of the Q and As, from residents in Redwood Valley. And I think they're very legitimate concerns, so I think I need a further briefing how people with the Corps coming in can guarantee that existing infrastructure is not gonna be hurt. Now, I think Potter Valley, Potter Valley is probably, has a different situation than Redwood Valley, but we have above-ground mounds that cannot take any weight on top of them, because of our water tables. And so, anyway, there's lots of ins and outs, so I just, I need a briefing on how we do that, and how it's gonna work, so I can guarantee residents that no harm's gonna come.
CEO Angelo, and then Supervisor Security.
So Chairman McCowen and Supervisor Brown, we will, we will get someone from either CAL OES or FEMA, or possibly the Army Corps, here next Tuesday for our briefing. Again, they've been trying to set up, and, you know, as, as Nash was saying, DTSC is out there now. So we'll go ahead and get someone, or maybe more than one person here, to address that next week. And it probably will come up tonight. I think it's a, I do think it's a big issue for people.
And, and the other is, I'm still encouraging people that still have not gone into the lack to do so, because we're closing on Friday, and very concerned if they don't get registered.
So I, I wanna clarify, the, the local assistance center is right now scheduled to be open every day, ten AM to seven PM, through Monday the thirtieth.
Oh, through the thirtieth.
Through the thirtieth. And, and we will be assessing at the end of this week if we need to stay open longer. So I don't know if you wanna speak to me this right now, but I wanted to speak just briefly. I have a packet of information for each of you today, that I'll leave with you around debris cleanup. We were on-
Well, I'd rather, and we have a question or comment from Supervisor Security on this current point, and then maybe we could get back to the list.
We could finish the directives, and then go to Ms. Chandler and Mr. Gonzalez.
So Supervisor Security.
Just quickly, on the point of the cleanup, I think it'd be fantastic if, if both DTSC and Army Corps can clean everything up within sixty days, but I just, I heard you say that the current ordinance allows for a trailer on someone's property for up to sixty days without a permit. And I'm just, I guess, a little concerned, what if the cleanup takes a little bit longer than that? Perhaps, if we're amending an ordinance, sort of through the adoption of an urgency ordinance, perhaps that should be changed to ninety days? I'm just tossing that out there.
If I may, through the Chair, there's a lot of moving parts here, but the current, the current code requires, or the current code allows for temporary camping on a, on a piece of property, within certain zoning districts, for up to sixty days, within a six-month period. Don't believe that needs to be changed, because the administrative permit is, ordinance, the urgency ordinance is gonna address that. Otherwise, what you're going to have is a lot of camping nuisances out there throughout the county. So we're trying to avoid all of that, by having something specifically attached to the fire victims. Otherwise, if we start amending the other ordinances, it, it will create nuisances, and that would lead to code enforcement. As far as the timing, what we've heard, for all of the counties affected, is the Army Corps of Engineers will be in there very, very soon after DTS. In fact, what I'm understanding is that they may even be in there as soon as DTS finishes a site. They could be in there looking at cleanup. Overall, for all of the counties, what I'm hearing is that they are targeting the first of the year for cleanup, to have everything cleaned up. It's a very aggressive movement right now by the federal government. Basically, what it came down to is the state government asking the federal government for assistance through FEMA. The Army Corps of Engineers has been brought into this, because it is a daunting and overwhelming task. But it is everybody's goal to try to have these affected counties cleaned up by the first of the year.
So I do wanna go back to this urgency ordinance, where we're, you know, creating these greater allowances for people more liberalized, and so I think we've covered it. It could be a trailer, it could be an RV, it could be a mobile home. There is the comment in here that mobile homes must go through standard building permit process. I would say, if they're not intending to put it on a permanent foundation, and have it be a permanent structure on the property, if they're pulling it in for a temporary habitation while they figure out the rebuilding process and all of that, that that'd be, you know, part of the administrative permit as well, where the, the main things you're looking at are environmental issues, and is there an appropriate setback from, from the damaged area in terms of exposure to toxics, or whatever? And Supervisor Kroski, do you have an add-on to that, or?
I had an add-on to Supervisor Jody's comment, so if he wants to answer your comment first, that's fine.
And then we'll come back to this.
Certainly.
So that's one thing I wanna clarify. I mean, I think we wanna, my recollection of the Board direction, we wanna be as liberalized, and as, and the least bureaucratic as we can be, in getting these people, the bona fide fire victims, back into a structure. So to the mobile home-
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, to the mobile homes, those are a little bit more tricky, because they fall under state law and the state building code. So we can't really liberalize what's coming down out of Sacramento for mobile homes. That's why the travel trailer's a little bit more easy, or the, or the RV to liberalize. But if they're going to use mobile homes, they do have to conform to setbacks. They don't necessarily have to be put on a foundation, but they do have to obtain a building permit. They do have to be inspected. They have to have their plumbing lines, water lines, gas lines, and, and where the seams come together of the mobile home appropriately inspected. So when it comes to the actual mobile home, whether or not it's on a permanent foundation or not, it still has to meet the building codes. They can be established with an administrative permit on a temporary basis, but again, when you are hooking up power, when you are hooking up electricity, plumbing, water, gas, they fall under the building code as well. So we can't really deviate from that. We don't have the authority.
Supervisor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and my question is, I believe that the state has one inspector for mobile homes that services Humboldt and Mendocino. Do we help in that process, in the inspection? 'Cause I know you get your permit from the state.
If I may, through the Chair, when you set up a mobile home in the county, you go through the county. The state inspector only applies to mobile home parks, campgrounds, RV centers.
Okay.
So they set up the permit through us. They have the choice to be there setting it up on jacks, or they can set it up on a foundation. The difference between the two is that one is looked at as, as personal property. When you put it on a permanent foundation, it's looked at as real property. And so people have the choice to do one or the other. They still have to conform with the building code. They still have to conform with setbacks, but it is the county inspector that's obligated under state law to do the inspections.
So I think also, we were, and it's referenced here, that not only the fire victim, but a contractor who is clearly linked with the rebuild of, of the burned-down home, could also locate onsite, and I think we had also said, on an alternate site. Again, the key thing being that that contractor is, has a bona fide link to rebuilding for the fire victim. So hopefully, that, that allowance is in there as well. And again, I really think for people willing to open up their property, you know, we want to. It's not merely the sixty-day camping thing, and I guess you're saying, then they would have to apply for the administrative permit. But I think the direction of the Board, the only things I heard last week for the administrative permit was the environmental issues are addressed, basically.
So, if I may, the environmental issues are, are going to be the, the septic, the water, and so on. These are all gonna be conditions of the administrative permit. So they're going to have to provide water availability, they're gonna have to provide for either a self-contained recreational vehicle, or something that is connected to a working septic system.
Correct. But we would, based on the emergency situation, we would waive the normal density. So if somebody was already at density, we would allow an RV or trailer, whatever, to come in for a fire victim.
The way we're looking at the density issue is, a property would be entitled to have a primary residence, a secondary residence, and then we're looking at the third residence slash RV coach. So typically, if you had a house, a property that had one- So typically, if you had a house, a property that had one residence on it, you could have a single-family home. In lieu of that, you'd have the RV, you could have the second unit, you could also have that third one for the contractor. So these are the things that we're exploring to make sure that we don't violate density issues and that we don't, again, as I've said, enter that Sequa world where it triggers a problem for the county.
Well, it may be, you know, up to what the will of the board is and what state law allows, but I think what we were talking about, or in my mind, it would be whatever you're allowed plus for a fire victim, if that's at all legally allowable. And I think we have consensus on that. And then the one other thing in this section we talked about was trying to identify properties that would be suitable for multiple units. And if a property owner has a property that could be utilized for multiple units, try and determine an expedited way to allow for that. And do you have any thoughts on how that might be accomplished?
Again, one of the things that we're looking at is when we talk about multiple units or multiple RVs on a piece of property, we're now getting into a recreational vehicle park, which again, triggers the use permit, triggers the Sequa.
But again, under the governor's emergency declaration and our emergency declaration, is it possible to waive some of that for bona fide fire victims?
And this is what we're exploring with council right now.
Thank you. So back to the cleanup issue, Supervisor Kroski.
Oh, thank you. Mine was, I just wanted to second, I worry that our timeline is probably pretty aggressive for cleanup. And if, in this emergency ordinance, if we can stretch that out to 90 days instead of 60 days for fire victims, I do think, you know, before they have to apply for the permit, that might cover that gap. Otherwise, we're going to have people applying for, you know, a permit for maybe 15, 20 days. I don't know. I just thought that that idea of trying to stretch the 60-day camping to 90 days in case our cleanup isn't as quick as we would like.
Well, I would support that, or if you could build something into this urgency ordinance that at the expiration of 60 days would allow them to simply roll it over for another 60 days, and it'd be a one-time thing related specifically to the fire emergency. And I'm getting nods of approval if that will pass legal muster. You know, and it's our ordinance that allows the camping for the 60 days, presumably we could roll that over. So I think the full board would appreciate a close look at that issue.
We will look at the.
Or alternately, could it be extended to 90?
If I may, through the chair, we'll take a look at that, but I think we were trying to cover everything under the urgency ordinance.
Sure.
So as to avoid amending other ordinances.
Supervisor Kroski, the point my colleagues raise, you know, just extending that a little bit might make the difference in they don't have to go through another bureaucratic process, you know, with an administrative permit or a use permit or whatever else. If we could simply create an allowance to either extend that camping period or roll it over, that could cover the, you know, enough time for the cleanup has been accomplished.
If I may, just one more comment. These are the things that we did think about, and we know that this is going to be a long-term effort. And so rather than looking at those other ordinances that could create nuisances in other parts of the county, we were looking at the three-year period for the administrative permit, whether it would be on an adjacent property, whether it would be on the affected property to address all of these issues rather than creating the ability for nuisances in non-fire-affected areas.
Supervisor Kroski.
Thank you, Chair. I think, I definitely agree, we need to have the administrative permit for the three-year period. I think we're trying to address some of the people who will be able to go back to their place, hopefully quickly as soon as cleanup is done, but there might be a small window where cleanup's not done yet. So I think that's what we were trying to address, just the people who had to stay at someone's house for, you know, longer than two months, but hopefully not too long. So just as a temporary measure along with the ordinance, that would really only be addressing here in the next few months.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
I think as long as the board directive is if it's tied to the fire victims.
Correct.
Otherwise, you're going to have a free-for-all camping out there, which should really be regulated to avoid the nuisances. But if it's specifically, the directive is tied to the fire victims, then I think we could incorporate that with the urgency ordinance.
Well, I think that's been clear from the beginning with the added wrinkle that if it's a contractor working for the fire victim to rebuild their home, we're willing to consider an allowance there.
Especially if it's an out-of-area contractor.
Right.
Right, I just wanted to make it very clear to folks out there that we're looking at two different ordinances. We're looking at an existing ordinance, which is the camping ordinance, and then we're also looking at the administrative ordinance. And I just want to make sure that we're not mixing apples and oranges, but we're taking the administrative permit and doing that, but at the same time, we're going to take a look at the camping ordinance, modify that just for the fire victims so that it's not lost in translation out there.
Absolutely. And I think that's been inherent in the board direction, the entire discussion. We're talking about assistance for fire victims only. One more thing on the cleanup that I think is critical, that I have heard lip service to, I've not gotten any assurance, and I've heard conflicting things. So the cleanup is going to be accomplished. Whether that happens in 60 days, 90 days, or longer, we'll see. But what is of critical importance right now is trying to contain the material. If it's legitimately toxic waste, and actually, some of the information on the state websites is conflicting, some of it says that the household burned material is hazardous waste, others say it is not. But there is a legitimate concern, I believe, that with the rains coming, we'll see this material dispersed into the environment, particularly where it's near streams and so forth. And when the issue gets raised, everyone says, yeah, that's a priority, we'll take care of it. But then I've also saw a comment where that will be up to the individuals, that the U.S. Army Corps is not going to come in and take immediate measures, they're just going to come in and do the cleanup when they get to it. What I think needs to happen in the short run, potentially cap a lot of the burned structure area with plastic and put straw wattles staked around the edges to contain, to prevent or contain runoff of the material. But who is doing that, if anyone? And it, I just think that's a critical issue that we need to get the information on, or we're going to see this stuff running off into the environment. Supervisor Brown.
And that, I made that note right here and actually talked about that at a previous meeting briefing that we had with all the state and federal agencies, because we depend on surface water for our water supply and big concern and for our creeks and our rivers as far as the aquatic life that they have there. But I see Mr. Howard would like to say something, would that be appropriate?
He does appear poised to come forward, so we will invite public comment.
Lee Howard, North Coast Builders Exchange, I'm not going to get into a whole lot, I just want to address the one that you're speaking about right now. Hazardous waste, true hazardous waste is really defined. RICWA, RCRC, regulated waste is probably what we're dealing with here. If we were dealing with, quote, hazardous waste, we would have people out there totally encapsulated in the whole nine yards. The requirements on how you get rid of these is, it does this when you get into the regulatory agencies. One, you have to be trained beyond belief. The other, you have to be trained, but it's a lot less, 40 hours, 10-hour refresher courses. When they start the testing out there at the site and where they test and how they test, it'll probably, I'll make a prediction, that 99% of it will end up as regulated material that has to go to a Class 1 site. And we don't have one of those sites here. Nobody yet has been able to identify where this or even inkling of where this stuff is going right now. So, you know, as we get into this, make sure you ask the questions. It's easy for the Corps and Cal EPA to walk in here and say, it's all hazardous waste, that's it. It isn't that simple. And your health department right here and a few other people can show you where it's at. So, you know, you can't, if you're Joe Q. Public, you can't hire an employee and go out and take care of hazardous waste in any way, shape, or form without a lot of documentation, including backgrounds on health and on your employees and a whole list of things. So I just wanted to say that right now. So you can get into it, it needs the discussion, really needs a discussion.
Thank you. And answers to a lot of focused questions. Who can remove it, where will it go, what, if anything, will be done in the short term to stabilize it pending the Army Corps coming in and doing the actual cleanup? What DTSC is on ground now, getting the obvious hazardous waste items? What level of testing is required before removal can be done? Who will do the testing? I think all of those are the kind of questions that Supervisor Brown and the rest of us have been asking for some clarity on.
So, through the chair.
Please.
We have been literally on phone calls night, day and night since Friday night, clarifying many of these questions with our state and federal partners of who's doing which pieces of these and collecting that information from our neighboring counties. So we have a lot of answers. We're starting to put up FAQs quickly, and those FAQs that we know the answers in detail that we're providing to the public. And Nash can provide you a little bit over the overview of the next steps, which we're really clear about. And we are quickly trying to gather information to educate the public on if they choose to participate in the current process with our state and federal partners, the next steps are very clear. If they choose not to and they want to go with private providers, as Mr. Howard said, there still will be a very rigorous process that needs to go through. But I don't know if Nash, you want to give an overview now or if you want to finish your overview here and how it's going to that larger discussion.
Since we're on it, maybe we should wrap up the cleanup issues right now.
If I may, Mr. Chair, members of the board, quick overview. DTSC is out there doing the initial reviews, assessments, and sweeps household hazardous waste. Once they are complete, they will turn it over to the Army Corps of Engineers. The Army Corps of Engineers will do a site assessment and also do the debris removal. There will be testing that will be done after the removal is made as well. We talk about hazardous materials, and I think the word hazardous is a general over rather than toxic, but hazardous, because a lot of the building materials that are used in older homes and even in some newer homes, but you've got asbestos that goes into roofing, asbestos that may be in the foundations or piping and so on. All of this was chemically impacted during the fires. There may be asbestos in the concrete. So all of this will have to be removed according to the Army Corps of Engineers. And because it's such a large daunting task, they will do this. It's been my understanding that they will work with contractors and they will look at the entire site, they will look at septic systems and so on. But a lot of damage has occurred to septic systems. The chief building inspector, building official was out there, and he and I have conversed numerous times, a lot of the septic systems have been destroyed out there onsite. In essence, there's, as he noted to me, that while they were doing their assessments during the fire, it's not uncommon that some of the leach lines that are buried as shallow as six inches were probably melted. They had walked into areas where the fiberglass covers of the septic tanks had basically melted or broken, and raw sewage was out on the ground. So all of this makes it hazardous waste. So to that effect, the idea is to have these sites cleaned up as soon as possible so that they can go ahead and be ready to be constructed on soon thereafter. It's my understanding that when the Army Corps of Engineers does the cleanup, they have to do it to the standards that Cal Recycle has, which California has the most stringent requirements for cleanup, and they have to follow those of the state. Because it is, as it was indicated to me by Cal OES yesterday, the state works for us and the feds work for the state. And that's the way it's supposed to come down. And so the county has requested assistance of the state, the state is having their folks on the ground, and it's Cal OES that'll be overseeing all of this.
Thank you. Supervisor Brown.
Thank you, and I'm glad we're talking again about septic. One of my phone calls over the weekend was from an individual that had heard a rumor, and a lot of rumors are flying, that the State Water Resources Control Board or North Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board was going to put out new standards based on all these fires for septic. Have you heard anything about that?
I have not, but we had this discussion yesterday during our meeting with Department of Toxic Substance, and Cal OES was there, and we've asked for engagement with their folks as well as the North Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board, so that there's that communication between all of the state agencies. And Cal OES made reference to their state partners, that they are going to be working with those folks. So they are aware of that, and they're wanting to make sure, and I want to make sure that what we have are all the state agencies on the same page so that there isn't an inconsistency there between state agencies. And when we talk about state agencies, we're looking at, you know, DTSC, we're looking at Cal OES, we're looking at Regional Water Quality Control Board, and obviously because of areas that may have to be stabilized, Department of Fish and Game or Fish and Wildlife need to be brought to the table.
But we have our own regulation for septic, correct?
Yes, which follows the North Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board. And Trey Strickland is here who can answer specific questions on septics.
Sure. And I just want to be alerted, the Regional Water Quality Control Board is even thinking about coming and superseding what we have here presently. I mean, I need to know that immediately if you get confirmation.
Yes, and we can do that, because that was one of the concerns that I expressed yesterday to Cal OES is the board needs, the regional board needs to be brought into this as soon as possible so that we don't have any wrenches thrown into the processes we're going through the cleanup and debris removal.
Supervisor Hamburg.
Nash, I've seen photos in the press of people, you know, on their property that has been burned to the ground, you know, sifting through their possessions. How does that happen, given that these are identified as hazardous waste sites?
As, if I may, through the chair, as you see entering Reddard Valley, there's these big signs that are posted along the roadway, basically advising people, enter at your own risk. So people are taking a risk by sifting through all this. But that does not prevent individuals from sifting through their property, through their personal belongings, because as we've understood, there's people that want to find those mementos that they can hang on to. And the state agencies tell me that that's not an issue. What is an issue is when people start removing the debris outside of the footprint, which is what they want to avoid. They want to avoid people coming in with bulldozers and backhoes, removing that debris, but to allow people to sift through things, that's not an issue.
Okay, good.
And people can minimize their exposure by wearing long pants, sturdy shoes, long-sleeved shirts, masks, gloves, but.
Yeah, I was surprised to see photos in yesterday's press, Democrat, people just having no protection, sifting through their.
Because, if I may, through the chair. Because, if I may, through the chair, one of the things that happened in Sonoma County, they just started to allow folks this past weekend to enter the areas on a limited basis. And by this week, they would be allowing people to repopulate back into those areas. So, we were actually a week ahead of everybody else. But I can tell you that what was told to me is that DTSC will be out there today, all of them wearing Tyvek suits.
Supervisor Brown.
Back to the cleanup. I did speak with some property owners that have remote homes that haven't signed up yet, encouraged them to do so. Don't know how many, I know these individuals had two remote homes, one an old farmhouse and the other is a Class K, was on the property previous to them buying it. So, you know, if somebody comes in on Friday or perhaps on Monday, they're still will be in the mix. And then this team that's evaluating the toxic waste would still be available to do the assessment.
The DTSC team will be in the area, I'm told, for the next four weeks. It's going to take them that long to do this. And not only will they be looking at Redwood Valley, but they also have to look at Potter Valley, they have to look at the Willets area that was affected. So, they have received the maps from staff that we worked in conjunction with Cal Fire. So, they've got those maps to work with. And so, they are looking at Redwood Valley, which is the most populated area right now. And then they'll be moving to the other areas.
And I appreciate your summation of, you know, the steps that will be taken. And the one thing that I didn't hear in there is what, if anything, will be done on a temporary basis to stabilize this material and who will do that? And I mean, I really think that's important because we know the rains are going to come before they're able to accomplish the final cleanup and removal of this material. Any last thoughts on the recovery portion or the cleanup or the urgency ordinance?
So, through the chair, I wanted to speak to two things that were mentioned. One around stabilizing materials, Nash may want to add more. But we are pulling together, particularly this watershed group, we have partners through Cal Fire that work on this, we're looking at our debris cleanup. We actually have strategically started our DTSC review on our most vulnerable areas for the environment and our waterways to make sure that we're addressing those areas first so that we can continue to work with our state and federal partners to address those concerns before the next rains as quickly as possible. And also around the rumors about what might be happening with the regional water board. Trey just reminded me that the groundwater basin plan or the basin plans that all of the state had to do, our regional water board was just rolling that out recently. So, there may be some confusion with people that there are new standards through the basin plan, but that actually has nothing to do with the fire at all.
Thank you.
If I may add, Mr. Chair, along the stabilization is, this question has been posed to OES as far as being able to get their assistance because they have committed assistance to all of this. One of the things that I did remind folks was that Tomcay is the headwaters of the Russian River. And that, and along we were on, like Tammy says, numerous phone calls throughout the weekend, in the evenings with state partners. And the other partners here are the other counties that are affected. And so, Sonoma County has been made aware of this as well. So, again, I think we're going to see some attention on this, especially from Cal OES, that these areas need to be stabilized. Because I took a look at those areas along Fisher Lake, along Tomcay, and that whole side that goes down to Tomcay has been denuded of vegetation. And there's nothing but ashes and burned trees there. And all of that has the potential for ash and debris flow into Tomcay Creek unless it's stabilized. So, the state has been made aware of the urgent need to get in there. And that's why we have concentrated on looking at having DTSC start with that northern area of the valley so they can be done and the Corps can come in and start doing their cleanup. And hopefully through OES, we can also have the Corps do the stabilization. But again, that is still something that we're waiting an answer on.
Thank you. Supervisor Brown.
Thank you. And just a correction, that is, Tomcay is the southern headwaters. And then we have Potter Valley, that's the northern headwaters, and Bush Creek where it went up, swept up and headed towards Pine Mountain and the Willets area. And then there are the other creeks that the fire went up and right into Redwood Valley. So, you know, we, and the vegetation has been neutered. So, it's, you know, we've got a big job and we can't do it ourselves. But I do know that, and I'm not sure if anyone else participated, it's for public officials, emergency services, but Cal OES is having listening sessions every Monday now and statewide, you can go on and you can ask your questions, bring up issues. So, I intend to continue participating in that process.
Thank you. Mr. Howard has a public comment. And then we're going to take a break.
Again, let me, you know, I hear some things and I really get concerned. Nash, you know, I've done septic tanks for virtually forty years in this county. Done a lot of fire things. I've yet to really see a septic tank destroyed by the fire itself. And we don't put six inches of cover most of the time over our leach lines. Lots of times, it's twelve and eighteen inches. I saw more damage to septic tanks and systems in Lake County with the cleanup people moving through and destroying it with a Cat 966 loader or a skid steer breaking through the top of a tank. I've seen more septic tanks destroyed by Cal Fires when Cal Fires out walking through the fire trying to put it out. I know that for a fact. I dropped a CDF cap into a septic tank one time. You don't know it's there, it destroys it. Septic tanks are a huge expense, especially with the new regulations. We want to do everything we can to try to save whatever we can out there. And it goes without saying that there's going to be a work plan that's going to come out from the Corps. All the rest of this stuff is going to be addressed, hopefully. But it's where and when it gets addressed and does the public, we, the public, get to hear and see of it. So, your concern for the material that's going to be flowing into Tomcay Creek. I have a lot more problem with Tomcay Creek than I do Brush Creek because there's a lot more material out there to flow. When you go out and look at the burn piled up and you look right there, it's the creek. You know, I think before the Corps moves in there and starts, they're going to have to address that problem also in their work plan on how they're going to do this. But the simple fact is, is if we had two weeks, four weeks, before we get two inches of rain, we're going to be lucky. And now, maybe we're going to have a real dry fall all year long. But the fish are going to be the first ones to notice it in Tomcay Creek. And I hope that somebody is addressing that in and of itself. Because that is a major project to go out and stabilize and waddle that area to make sure that we reduce whatever is going to get into the creek. The number of people it'll take to do that is unbelievable. You're talking five miles. And by the time you walk around and put wattles in and up and over and down, you're probably talking ten miles. I hope that, you know, the water people and the fishery people are saying, "Hey, this is a big, big part of the initial problem." Now, not the cleanup, I'm going to be a bit surprised when it starts raining. How many of the Corps people have been in Mendocino County when we really start to get the rain? We're in, the end of October. It's not far down the road. So, that discussion I have not been able to hear or that it's gone on, and it's very limited to what the discussion is right here today.
Well, and again, you make the point, you underscore the point. If this stabilization doesn't take place in the next two to four weeks, and we may not even have that, we're going to have another environmental disaster on our hands. And the top priority in these critical areas where it's steep terrain and it's straight into the creek, top priority has to be stabilizing that material. And they will need to be doing some of the stabilization stuff even if the cleanup is all accomplished in order to minimize just the normal erosion that's going to occur without the ash.
If you've seen some of the construction sites around town here and you looked at the wattles on them and the rock beds going in and out to make sure it doesn't get, you know, somebody said, "Well, we're going to move in there and do Tomcay Creek." I said, "Move in and do it with what?" You realize we're, semis can't even get past the old Ford. You know, it's, we're looking at a hundred trucks a day, two hundred trucks a day in the Tomcay Creek? We'll address it in the plan, and the plan's going to be very interesting to look at and see how they're going to address it. It isn't like driving, being able to drive around the block in Santa Rosa and load it all up from two or three sites.
Thank you. Supervisor Brown, and then we will take a break.
Talking about, you know, general rules, construction sites must be all protected and construction completed, no grading as of October fifteenth of every year. So, you know, this is a challenge. But I also want to remind everyone, the water supply goes into Sonoma County. We all share it. And they're going to be just as concerned. And if we're last on the list to be serviced, where do you think pollution's going to go? And I do worry about the aquatic life as well, listed fisheries. But, you know, certain points have to be brought out. And I'm sure the people that lost their homes don't want to lose a good quality water supply as well. So, you know, lots of issues.
And I spoke with Supervisor James Gore of Sonoma County yesterday, and I think some of my colleagues may have been in contact with him and other supervisors throughout the region as well. And it kind of underscores the importance and Director Gonzalez, you mentioned this earlier, of having a regional approach to some of these issues and working together with our colleagues in other affected counties to hopefully have a unified approach to how we best accomplish the recovery.
And I've pointed out some of those things to Supervisor Gore.
So, with that, we will take a break. We will reconvene approximately eleven twenty.
Okay. And I just want to reach out to staff. You know, we're not, we don't have a huge staff, but everyone that has been working on this twenty-four, seven, you know, your days, twenty-hour days, I just want to say thank you. And I know we're bringing up a lot of points here. It's like, we're just trying to make sure things are covered if you, because we get questions from constituents. But I don't know where Tammy is, but really, it's a shout-out at the training, Sheriff's Training Center, everybody that worked in the county staff and now going through this recovery phase, thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And so do the constituents we're serving here in the county. Thanks.
Well, thank you Supervisor Brown, and I think you speak for all of us. And I just want to make sure it's clear, my detailed questions of some of these things, it's in no way a criticism of staff whatsoever. It's just trying to clarify board direction so we get the maximum amount of help possible for the fire victims. But I do believe Supervisor Brown speaks for all of us in thanking our staff for, you know, really their tireless efforts both during the fire emergency and now as we shift into recovery. And again, I think we're very fortunate to have Tammy Moss Chandler as our Director of Recovery and working with Nash and the other departments to address all these many issues, any one of which is multifaceted. So, again, I think that's the consensus of the board. We really do appreciate all of your efforts. So, CEO Angelo, if you could take us back to the list, and we've got about four more boxes.
Thank you, Chairman Cowan. And just so the board knows what's coming, we'll finish this list. And then Tammy also has a presentation and Nash as well. So, we'll try to get through this as expeditiously as we can. The next item is around exploring options regarding allowance of composting toilets or other alternative gray water systems for use in temporary housing for fire victims. And Trey Strickland is here, so I would ask Trey to come up and speak to this. And you may have other questions around environmental health.
Thank you. Trey Strickland, Environmental Health. So, the notes haven't really changed. We don't have a permit to issue for compost toilets. The state does not have guidance yet that they've developed for the installation and use of compost toilets. We know there's a lot of compost toilets in the county. The ones that we know about, we, if people want to propose a compost toilet, we do ask that they need a septic system also for when the toilet's not working properly, if it breaks. And mostly, in a residence, you're generating wastewater from many different sources. Toilet only takes care of one of those sources, even if you have a gray water system. Standards still require that you have a leach field for black water for periods of rain. And the installation of gray water is similar to a septic system. You're still digging a trench, you're laying pipe. So, that's kind of where we stand, is the septic system is required whether you have a gray water system or a compost toilet. But we do utilize an alternative sizing criteria so that if you have a compost toilet or a gray water system, you get credit for the reduced amount of water that's going into your leach field in your septic tank. So, we do allow for shorter leach lines and potentially a smaller septic tank for someone that wants to use a compost toilet or gray water system.
Board members? Well, again, if there's a way to relax standards, and I don't know if that's possible with regard to what the state regulations are, but, you know, whatever consideration can be given to the fire victims, that's what I support. But we may be pretty limited in this area, I believe is what we're being told.
Yeah, and I would suggest that for a short-term solution, porta-potties are probably a better option than a compost toilet because they're very mobile. And as long as we have the providers that can pump the tanks on a regular basis, that seems like the best short-term solution.
Thank you for that suggestion. And so, I think that information could be put out to the fire victims and made available at the local assistance center. And hopefully, a lot of what we're discussing can get distilled down and disseminated to people there.
Through the chair to comment on that, Trey and his environmental health staff have had a table.
And his environmental health staff have had a table all, every day during all hours of the local assistance center.
Thank you. Next.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman McHown. The next item is staff to explore legal parameters of what relief the board could give for cannabis cultivators, including option to adjust or waive tax payment due. And County Council had asked for additional clarification, so I'm going to turn this over to County Council Elliot. And Sherry Schatmeyer is here too, so I'm not certain if Sherry also has a question or a comment on this one. Kit.
Thank you. In looking at this, there wasn't a lot of clarity in terms of what the board was seeking. So, the answer to the question of could we, in terms of the ordinance, since it was passed by the voters, we, there is language directly in the ordinance to reduce the amounts. That would be okay. We can just simply not increase the amounts. So, what I would need, and I have been speaking to tax collector Schatmeyer, what I would need from this board is clarification of what you were looking at. This was related only to the cultivators, I understand it. And with regard to the cultivators, what we're looking at is a gross receipts tax. So, if they are still meeting their gross receipts, you know, is there anything that you're looking for with that? Then we, I think mostly what the board would be seeking is something in the form of what the minimum requirements are in terms of payment. But I'm, again, seeking clarification.
Well, that's exactly what I had in mind, that it does provide for a minimum payment. And so in a situation where someone had no gross receipts or gross receipts reduced below what the minimum payment would be based on their crop was destroyed in the fire, I would be, frankly, I would be willing to waive the tax. So, again, if they had no gross receipts because their entire crop was destroyed in the fire, I think it's reasonable to waive the minimum payment. Because there was circumstances occurred beyond their control that it'd almost be a further penalty to impose the tax when the entire value of their crop may have been lost. And so what I hear you saying is if the board supports that, then we can give that direction. And again, it is only for fire victims. It is only for people who were in our cultivation program. Board members, Supervisor Brown?
How do you, how does one qualify that?
They were a fire victim, they had no gross receipts. Because their crop was destroyed, they shouldn't have to pay the minimum tax.
I see Ms. Schatmeyer coming up.
And I would say if they did have some level of gross receipts, but the tax on that, so for a fire victim, they would pay, they would not be subject to the minimum penalty. They would pay whatever gross receipts tax on whatever gross receipts they had, but they wouldn't be subject to the minimum. It'd strictly be applied to gross receipts. So, that's what I had in mind. Supervisor Jirdy?
I would support that because I think we don't want to be sending a signal that people who are in the program are being penalized due to natural disasters. And it, I think it's going to be a fairly small list of people who would fit that criteria anyway, but I think it's important, maybe symbolically, for the county to do this.
Well, and for those affected, it'll, you know, it'll be, yeah. Other comments?
I support it.
Supervisor Krosky?
No comments.
Supervisor Brown?
Sure.
So, Treasurer Tax Collector Schatmeyer, further clarification?
Sherry Schatmeyer, Treasurer Tax Collector. So, as County Council Elliot had alluded to, we have been actually working on the Chapter 6.32, the cannabis business tax, for probably a good two to three weeks prior to the fire devastation. And because we had sent out, for all the cultivators, we'd sent out 679 cultivator returns, and so it was our first bite at the apple. And we, of course, have a lot of questions. There's a lot of confusion out there. Now with the fire, it's just created to that confusion. Not only were there cultivators that were affected by the fire itself, there were cultivators that were also affected by smoke. We're hearing that. So, there's a bigger, I think this is a bigger conversation that I think we're going to have to, hopefully, my thought is, and I think County Council agrees with me, is what we'd like to do, I had some proposed amendments that I wanted to bring forth over the course of the next week or two that would address some of the, and it's mostly to clarify things in the ordinance. We, of course, we're not going to increase anything. We don't have that option. This is a voter initiative, and that's not what we want to do. But now that we know what we know out there, we do have some areas where we really need to clarify what this tax is all about. I think, yeah.
And we're kind of getting into a separate realm because the issue of cycles and what does that mean, based on what we've learned, that all needs to be addressed. And what we're really talking about today is the impact of fire victims and the application of the minimum tax.
Yeah, correct. So, my hope was that we could actually bring this back in the next week or two as a full item, separate from this, what we're doing. That's not anything we can bring back in a couple of weeks?
Well, I want to get the message out there right now that if you are a fire victim, you're only subject to the gross receipts. You are not subject to the minimum. And if it's, if that's too challenging, I would even waive the minimum this year and people would just be paying on their gross receipts, although I think we'll lose some revenue because people haven't yet found their way into the above-ground market.
Correct. No, I absolutely agree with what the board's saying, and that's what I was thinking was going to happen. There just are other questions, and right now our phones are ringing off the hook with questions, with cannabis, related to the cannabis business, you know, with, to the tax. And so, in addition, and I don't know if you want this discussion to wrap into the greater discussion.
I kind of want to keep them separate because I think we could deal with the fire damage issue right now and make that clear. And yet, yes, we're still working to resolve the issue of definition of cycles and how that applies. Supervisor Krosky?
Thank you, Chair. And while I might be the lone vote, I think I do support maybe wrapping this into a bigger discussion, only because as we talk fire victims, while we think that's a small group, I think we're going to start to see it expand because we have the people who's, you know, had actual loss of crops from the fire. We also have people who were evacuated and weren't able to water crops. We had people that were, that lost power and, you know, even after they got back to their homes, still had no power to be able to pump water. So, I think there might be more affected than what we think when we just say, you know, loss of crops due to fire. And I worry we're going to end up having a somewhat fuzzy line that's going to...
Well, and no line is going to be perfect and address everyone totally equitably, but what if we said anyone who was subject to mandatory evacuation orders would not be subject to the minimum tax? That'd, so then that's going to cover anyone who couldn't get in to water their garden or they had smoke damage or whatever. Just a suggestion, but other board members? Supervisor Jirdy?
I think that's a reasonable expansion of the concept, but I don't know. Supervisor Krosky, do you think that covers?
I would think it would. I just, I think, you know, we were letting some people go in who had actual permits, but we sent out taxes for people who are still in the process. Correct?
Correct. We sent out 679 returns, and last count that I heard, we had about 22 that were permitted. So...
Supervisor Brown?
Well, I will go along with, but I'm glad Supervisor Krosky brought up the bigger issue, because I heard a lot about that as well.
Supervisor Hubbard? So, I think we're giving direction that anyone who was in a mandatory evacuation area would not be subject to the minimum tax.
For this fiscal year?
For this fiscal year.
But they would still be required to pay gross receipts?
Yes.
For any sales?
If they had any receipts, they would be subject to the gross receipts tax.
Okay.
And I also want to have the bigger discussion sooner than later.
Well, and I agree because we need to resolve that before people can actually properly pay their taxes.
Correct.
And so then, although you've just sent out all these returns, maybe it's appropriate to send out a follow-up explaining that if people were in the mandatory evacuation areas, they would not be subject to the minimum tax and that the county is reviewing the other issues related to the tax. So, but I don't know, because I assume that the answer on that is going to affect what people are required to pay.
Well, first and foremost with this tax, it's gross receipts tax. So, right now, the gross receipts is what people are mandated to pay. The minimum amounts due for the growing cycles, that's something that desperately needs to be clarified. So, yes.
So, is it appropriate to let the affected people know that that discussion is currently taking place or...
Yes, I would like, I mean, I could actually, we're going to probably be sending out a follow-up. We sent the returns out technically, they have until October 31st to pay those returns. What will probably happen in November is we'll probably send out a second notice to those that we have not received returns from, but in this case, we'd probably do it to everybody and we could provide information to them, whatever we need to provide at that time.
Thank you Supervisor Brown.
Thank you. And my recommendation would be to let Ms. Schatmeyer handle it out of her office with reports back, whatever process you deem needed for notification.
Certainly, but how we ultimately resolve the fee per cycle issue, that'll be board direction.
Yes. But the re-notification, I think we should leave it up to her leadership on how to proceed.
Other comments? CEO Angelo?
Thank you, Chairman McHown. My only comment is that we have a cycles working group. So, I don't know if you would like to have this discussion with them once they bring forward recommendations or if this is something that you want to do within the next week or so.
Well, is there an active working group on the cultivation cycles?
There has not been because we did the, no, we did the first four. And so now we finalized one with bringing that information. So, now we can do, we can bring the working cycles on. So, I don't know. What we can do is the people that are on that committee, we could just invite them if the board wants to have a discussion here.
Well, I don't think initially it needs to be a full board discussion, so it might be appropriate to have it be staff and the cultivation cycle working group.
That would be fine.
I think that worked well on the state regulations issue.
That's fine. That's why I wanted clarification because...
Then we would want to activate that group as soon as possible.
We will do that, yeah.
With everything else going on.
I know. Thank you for reading my mind. Thank you. But, so maybe Ms. Schatmeyer wants to join our working group.
I would love to join your working group.
That would actually work really well, so thank you.
And so I'm hearing no objection and I'm seeing some nods to the sound, so thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
But we, for anyone asking, they can be told if they are in the mandatory evacuation zone, and then we'll kind of need to identify a list of who those applicants were, they will not be subject to the mandatory minimum tax for this fiscal year.
We're almost done with these directives.
I just want to clarify one thing, and this is Sherry Schatmeyer again, and this is typically an outdoor grow, but we will have some people that will have multiple minimums throughout the fiscal year. And so, like, they may have...
If we don't correct the bigger issue.
They may have, well, they may have indoor grows and that, and I don't know how, you know, how much that's affected with this or not, and it may not be. When you say, you're saying all minimum grows on those parcels regardless of number of growing cycles?
So, obviously, it's more complicated because there are multiple growing cycles, although we struggle to define exactly what that means. I don't know.
Yeah.
They are not currently subject to the mandatory minimum.
Okay. Well, I'll do my best.
That might, that might be revisited.
Okay.
Because, you know, I mean, next year, particularly an indoor grower, although we have very few applicants in the indoor category, so...
Okay. Thanks.
That's, that's the best we can do for now, I guess.
Okay. Two more directives, and then I'll turn it over to Ms. Chandler. This is the last page. Staff to check with assessor's office to see if it is feasible for county to initiate self-review of properties whose homes have been, property owners whose homes have been affected by the fire and include in next week's update. And Sue Ranacek did respond that her office will be doing both self-review and processing damage claim reports. And so I hope that answers this board's question.
Well, was there an indication as to timeframe? Because, of course, tax bills...
No, there was not. However, we could see, I could ask Janelle to see if Ms. Ranacek is available to come over and speak to this, if we can move to the next directive while we wait.
Right. And, or maybe if it's simply the direction that that be expedited, because otherwise people are going to get a tax bill and be, by the face of the bill, be required to pay taxes on a structure that no longer exists.
Okay. All right. We will certainly relay that message to Ms. Ranacek.
Thank you.
Okay. And then the last directive was to investigate options for recovery task force, including what it looked like in Lake County, report back to the board next week to provide information found. Alternately, here we go, Chairman McHown.
Come on down.
Could you repeat the question, please? Sue Ranacek, assessor recorder. Mr. Chair.
The concern is tax bills are going out and people are potentially going to be asked to pay taxes on a structure that no longer exists. Could we expedite the reassessment of properties that were damaged or destroyed by the fire and self-initiate that and, you know, get an accurate tax bill out as soon as possible?
So, what we're doing, we have collected 139 damage reports with, and on these damage reports, there is a waiver that the assessor has the authority to do, it's under Section 194.1, to defer the first payment that is due December 10th without any penalties or interest. So, we're hoping to get the corrected bills done and out around the first of the year in January, and then they would have 30 days to pay the new bill. So, they wouldn't be responsible for the first payment.
But those are the people that have filed a claim.
Right.
And it shouldn't be that difficult for us to identify the properties, certainly where everything was destroyed.
Right. We do have the pictures. Google Earth has put them up over the weekend. We are currently going through CAL FIRE's list to see where the structures are. I went through the list yesterday. The executive office wanted a total assessed value of what was damaged at this point. It's a little over 38 million. We do know that CAL FIRE's list is not accurate. It's missing a lot of damaged properties at this point. So, we are going to go through and go piece by piece with parcel layers and photos, and we will get through it as quickly as we can.
And the intention is for us to capture every damaged property, whether we have an application or not?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Supervisor Brown?
Yes, and maybe this is a question for Tammy. Are we going to have that information tonight as part of the recovery team? as part of the recovery team speakers?
Which information?
On property tax.
Actually...
I'll be there.
Oh, yeah, oh, cool, okay.
Is in the speaker lineup.
Thank you. I didn't know we, you know, we're going to cover one person covering several areas. I have not seen the agenda, so I apologize.
That's fine, I'll be there.
I apologize for that, that I didn't have the speaker lineup, but I would like to, through the chair, acknowledge that Sue has been at the local assistance center. Her employees have been there every day, but she's been there a lot of the time herself personally.
Go Sue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Chair McCown, one final, one final directive, which I think is equally important. Investigate options, didn't I just read this? Yes, investigate options for recovery task force, or explore options of creating an ad hoc or standing committee. And so I did speak with the Lake County CAO, Carol Hutchinson. The recovery task force that was put in place was put in place by Carol at the time that she was the recovery coordinator. It's a committee made up of recovery staff, they meet with the community monthly, and it's an information session. Carol says that it is, the Lake County CAO says it's very effective, particularly because people do show up, they do get information, and it's a great way to communicate. It's not a Brown Act meeting. So for this board, I'm wondering, it's, it's very easy for, for us, under Tammy's lead, to initiate a recovery task force, particularly with the two areas, Redwood Valley and Potter Valley. I'm not certain what this board would like to do. The recovery task force could be staff, and of course, the supervisors show up, and what the Lake County CAO said was that those supervisors in the affected areas would come as they could. But it's not a standing committee, not an ad hoc, and certainly not a Brown Act committee. So it's up to this board what you would like to do. I, I believe that for us to present to this board an update at every board meeting really works to give you the information, and certainly for staff to have the availability of the board. We will do community meetings, so it's up to you if you want to form an ad hoc, we'll bring an item next week. If you want the recovery task force to be a board task force, we can do that, it's whatever your choice is.
Well, I don't know why the meeting that Supervisor Brown has helped organize couldn't be considered the first meeting of the recovery task force. It's a lot of the same personnel, but at any rate, going forward, whether you like that idea or not, going forward, I think having a monthly meeting, call it recovery task force, call it community meeting, but it, in my mind, it would be all the same people, whatever you call it. And it could also include the California Office of Emergency Services and FEMA, to have them in a position where they're both hearing directly from the public their concerns, and also being able to respond to questions. So ideally, I think the ideas get all the relevant players together. I think that's what Lake County was intending to do, and they seem to think it was a good experience for them. So those would be my comments Supervisor Brown.
Thank you Chair McCown, and I do think it's important to have two supervisors assigned rather than a standing committee, and both Supervisor Crosskey and I, our districts have been the most impacted, although it did jump over Highway 101 into the 5th.
And thank goodness they put it out there, too.
And that was very quick, yes. Yeah. But I would like to have this board assign two supervisors, just to meet with staff, and, and be able to help organize these community meetings. I think it's important the whole board get the update, because our meetings are televised, and people see that agenda item, they want to know what the updates are. So that's my recommendation, and how we put it together, I'm not quite sure, but I know the CEO and, and Ms. Moss Chandler will figure it out and do it right.
Well, and I, I see that as in addition to the ongoing updates to the full board also.
Well, I said that.
That, that would be fine, just one point of clarification, Chair McCown, the meeting this evening is a Redwood Valley MAC meeting, and so I would ask the supervisor of that district, I'm going to make the assumption that we will do community meetings in Redwood Valley, community meetings in Potter Valley, or if you choose, we could do both. But do you want us to just do MAC meetings, or do you prefer to have community meetings?
Well, and that should be a discussion with the MAC, and the reason why I say that, they had a special meeting scheduled for tonight anyway, and then they came and said, you know, we would like the recovery team to come and do presentations, and turned it into more of a, instead of a community planning meeting, turn it into more of a community meeting as a result of the disaster. And so I'm expecting the MAC to go continue their meetings, which will be about two a month that, that the community can attend, but I think for our purposes, it's probably important for us to, to have our separate meetings from the MAC, so it doesn't divert their attention.
Thank you.
And Potter Valley is a different scenario than Redwood Valley, and what I have done, and I believe Supervisor Crosskey as well, has encouraged Potter Valley residents directly impacted, and Pine Mountain residents impacted, to attend the Redwood Valley meeting tonight, that instead of doing three meetings, we will have just the one. So we're hoping that that, tonight's meeting will, for those not informed, those that haven't been, haven't signed up, to attend and get the information they need in order to do so. So it's, because it's just over taxing for staff to have three different meetings than just one for the initial.
Supervisor Crosskey.
Thank you, and I just wanted to agree with Supervisor Brown. I, I think we should do a separate meeting, because I think it is important to keep it separate from the MAC meeting as we move forward. Plus, I think it's important for these communities to come together. I, I know Willet's felt like an isolated island at the beginning of this, but it's a pretty quick 15-minute drive to Redwood Valley, and I think it's important for Potter Valley, Redwood Valley, and Willet's to all come together for these meetings, just to, you know, help each other through it.
And maybe for the future meetings, that, you know, reasonably convenient to everyone, potentially the Consolidated Tribal Health would be willing to make their meeting room available. They have a good-sized meeting room.
Yes, they do.
So, and easy access for people coming down 101 or over 20.
That's true.
So perhaps, if that sounds reasonable to the district supervisors.
Great suggestion, I never would have thought of it, but appreciate that very much.
So staff could follow up on that.
We will do so. At this time, Chair McCown, we're done with the directives from last week, and I'd like to turn it over to Tammy. Thank you.
Time check, I think if we can get through this, we will have only one other item, so I don't know, should we come back at 1:30, or, or keep going?
It's whatever, but I, I would very much, I mean, it's how the whole group feels, but I do think we need to hear from two more public speakers. We have Granville Pool, Chair of the Redwood Valley County Water District, that might be able, we had an earlier question, and we were going, you know, going through the list, and I think he's read it now, he might want to come up and talk about their recent board meeting, and share some information.
And let me do a time check with staff, what the additional presentation we're going to hear, do we have an estimate of how long that may take?
Probably 15 minutes, and, and we do have, I do know that Mr. Howard does have comments on, on something that Tammy will be talking about.
And then reconsideration of the Army Corps letter potentially could go fairly quickly, so shall we go forward with a goal of adjourning by 12:30 if we can?
Yeah.
Okay, so public comment to the issues we've been discussing in First Granville Pool, if you would like to address the board on issues related to the Redwood Valley County Water District?
I'll do my best. Don't particularly have anything prepared to say. I did talk to Bill Kohler, our general manager, a bit yesterday about this, and I understood that he was going to, going to be here and, and talk about this. But just looking at what you wrote here, aside from kind of reimagining the name of our district, an important item in, in your description here about the moratorium on water restrictions, can you illuminate a bit what you had in mind there?
Mr. Chair?
Please.
Thank you. Well, it, it came to my mind that Redwood Valley does have a moratorium on their water distribution. So if my house burned on Fisher Lake Road, and there is another piece of property that I would choose to build on, other than back where the footprint is, could I transfer my water permit, or whatever you call it?
Basically move the meter.
Yes, okay, move the meter, that is good terminology, but I am hearing some of that and questions, and so...
Excellent question, yeah, that was, you know, just reading this, that isn't what I thought this was about. That's much easier to address than what I was thinking you were talking about, because the moratorium on domestic drinking water hookups itself is a state, you know, was mandated by the court, and so that's not something that we have the discretion to undo. But what you're talking about, about possibly being able to move a service from one parcel to another, to accommodate rebuilding in a different location, that's something that we did actually discuss at our last meeting, and agreed that would be, is to the best of our knowledge, within our discretion under the mandated moratorium.
And then the other question I would like to put before you, about what did the County Water District, what, what infrastructure did you lose, and what concerns do you have, or the district has, in servicing people, organizing them around, you know, the pump that was lost, the water pressure, so people know?
Oh, yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, too. Until we're able to rebuild the booster station on Tonkai Road, the people that are served beyond there are going to have pretty minimal water pressure. And so Bill's notion was that if the people who are still served there can kind of get together and coordinate among themselves some kind of a schedule of how they use water, it might not be quite as miserable a situation as if they're all trying to compete for the water. And of course, we've already taken steps to try to address getting the, the pump station rebuilt, but it's obviously going to take some time.
I think that pretty much, is there, I think you used on Sunday, when we had our long conversation, a certain area that this impact will occur to?
Well, Bill could address that much better than I can, but the pump station is on the, what is it, on a piece that was carved out of the Frye Winery property.
Okay.
And so I think it basically affects the people that are beyond there, because, you know, you're going uphill from there.
Right.
And just the gravity flow from our plant starts to poop out at that point.
Do you have an estimate of how many properties are affected by that?
No, I don't.
But Mr. Kohler will be there tonight, and he will be addressing that to the people.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think he's prepared to talk about all these things at this evening's meeting.
He sent me an email in response, yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Howard.
It's afternoon now, so good afternoon, Lee Howard. I, I'm going to go through a list, and I'm going to go fairly rapidly, and please ask questions. The reality of three years is, I think, not very good foresight. I would suggest that you go out five years in your reworking of your ordinance, so they can, Middletown, right now in Lake County, has a 6% rebuild rate as of last week, with many on the things. That was 2015 fire. So it's going to take a while. Don't lock yourself into a three-year cycle. Any talk, any conversation regarding FEMA trailers? Has that?
I don't think that's a short-term solution. One conversation I had was if they're going to become available due to Florida and Texas and everything else in California, it'd be a very minimum of six or nine months down the road, realistically, maybe longer.
I've heard that there's 300 parked in California, so I will look ourselves into that one, but, you know, those are, they throw five to a trailer load and, and deliver them if they're available, you know?
We can certainly, you know, look into that with FEMA.
Well, it's just, again, people that, once they get cleaned up, they could, you know, maybe you go out instead of buying something, or don't have the money to buy, they could, they could facilitate a FEMA trailer onto their property until they get built back. It's just an option. The power issue on the permitting, the county has a electrical meter policy that they actually just put in place, 7717, and it doesn't talk anything about agric, or, excuse me, power for, for a well. And it's, that's been a problematic thing over the years, whether you can go in there and just get a permit for an electrical pole just to run your, your, your well. In a lot of these areas, they are locked into a well, they don't have Redwood Valley on all of these out there. If they've lost their power, lost their, everything else, a power pole for a well will give you electricity to run it. Granted, the county in lots of cases have problems, because then you have power for a trailer to move in. But if you, if you had a electric power, and that gives you water, you already have an existing septic tank, you could have someplace to live. The last one, or it's not the last, but one other one, a footprint of the fire area, and many times today you've talked about where it's at, what it's at, how it's going, a footprint drawn out, and put on a map, of the areas you're talking about. When you say evacuation, I got a mandatory evacuation at my place. So it isn't the same. The smoke that's going to damage, if you, anybody watched the news last night, the poor guy in Sonoma that lost a billion, billion plants and all the money, the smoke is doing as much damage to his marijuana as the rest of it. But a footprint of the people that are affected here, and how... But, a footprint of the people that are affected here, and how you're gonna work to it. If you're coming all the way down the valley and lots of other places. My last one is, is how many campsites are empty at Lake Mendocino at the core? How many people have taken advantage of our public resources and moved a trailer in, camp trailer or otherwise, into the Lake Mendocino campgrounds? This morning, at least at the south end, the gates were still locked. Nobody was open, no, nothing open to do. Maybe it takes a call to our congressman to say, "We want those campsites opened up." They're close proximity to Redwood Valley. Be there in 10 minutes, up over Road B. They have sewer, they have water, they have electricity, and they can even have security if somebody, and if the core is so poor and so destitute that they can't have people man those things, maybe the county needs to put the caretaker out there to manage them.
And Supervisor Brown has a comment?
They are replacing the vacant positions. I did inquire, and they will have a head project manager in place within the next week out of the San Francisco District Division. And, so, I'm supposed to meet with whomever is selected when that is announced, and the person takes over the position. But it is expected by November 1st, so...
Supervisors, that would be unacceptable to me. You can get ahold of Mike Delabou, and maybe ask him, Delabow, and ask him to, but our congressman...
Just met with him on Friday.
Yep.
So, you have additional points?
No, I will not. I have several other points, but I'll look at, as you go into this thing and see some work plans. We in Sonoma County, the Builders Exchange down there, are saying, "Don't sign the right-of-entry until you see the whites of their eyes." There are too many questions after Lake County and some of these others that really leave, lead, and you have, you're gonna be working on a letter today regarding that. I think it's premature to ask people to sign something that they don't even know, and you don't know what you're signing, so, thank you.
Although, without the right-of-entry, if you don't agree to that, then you're not eligible to have the government come in and do the cleanup.
But, they do have to identify that, and I, it's our opinion, and I'll talk to them down there again, but it's our opinion, you got the cart before the horse. You haven't even chosen them, and agreed to what they're asking. And that can be a, you know, when you start giving up everything, your insurance, your, everything that you touch, and they come in and bulldoze your place, and you have no right to go back and say, "Hey, you just wrecked my septic tank when you loaded out two or three loads of garbage off my thing. Do I have any recourse?" According to what I've learned so far, no, you don't have any recourse. You just shell the money out of your pocket and pay for it yourself.
Thank you. Supervisor Brown, question?
And this is why I received numerous phone calls over the weekend, concern. And I think we have asked staff, as a part of the process today, to come back with more information as to how that, and how that goes forward if you've signed.
We, Chairman McCowen, Supervisor Brown, I think that also what Mr. Howard's referring to is we have a letter that's going out under my signature to property owners. It is a cover letter that goes with the right-of-entry, and Tammy's been trying to get to it, we just haven't gotten to it yet.
Okay, then we have the two finish up. I'd like for them to go forward and maybe finish up this meeting by 1:00.
Well, absolutely, that's what I'm trying to get to, and trying to finish it up sooner than that. Please go forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Chairman McCowen, members of the board. So, I wanted to share with you, actually, as CEO Angelo mentioned, the further board members. I put together yesterday a packet of information, of some of the key information that's available at the local assistance center, and some of the key information that we clarified over the weekend about debris removal. Because we have four big messages this week that we wanted you to be aware of. And the first one is, go to the local assistance center, as Supervisor Brown has said. The local assistance center served over 200 households in the first three days. Ever since then, there's been, on average, more than 50 households a day, people are coming back. There are a lot of federal and state partners, and you'll see those listed in no particular order, except how the room is set up on the pink sheet that's inside your folder. All the various agencies are there. And those federal and state agencies are committed to be there at least through 7:00 PM October 30th, every day of the week. So, we're really encouraging people to get there for this next week if they haven't, or to continue to come back each day to meet with the various programs that they're learning about. And a big thing that's happening in the local assistance center today is this new information about debris cleanup, that you heard the summary from Nash Gonzalez, and the right-of-entry forms. So, I'm gonna talk a little bit about, more about that in a few minutes. But, the other big message that we're trying to get out to people is that when they apply for FEMA assistance, there, that we want them to understand their temporary housing needs that can be met if they qualify for what's known as transitional shelter assistance. So, the shelter, there were no more fire victims in the shelter over the weekend. So, we are getting the word out, though, if people have transitional needs still, they have this hoteling option available. And that's why you'll continue to see this week more and more information about hoteling, and trying to address any concerns that come up with the FEMA process for that. The third big and most important message of the day really is about debris cleanup. So, in that packet, you'll see the letter that CEO Angelo mentioned, that was drafted in coordination with our information from Cal OES and FEMA. And I'm trying to clarify that this Phase 1 process that Nash has been working in, on since day one, to make sure that we have the state here as early as possible to assess and learn about our situation. So, we have the Department of Toxic Substances and Control here already. We had a big meeting with them, and our state and federal partners yesterday. And we are expecting our permanently assigned person with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers is arriving today, right now, probably as we're meeting. And, and that person is going to be with us over the next many weeks or months to come. And will also be assigned a permanent placement of our Cal OES person. And so, as CEO Angelo mentioned, by next Tuesday, we should have our local, permanent, state, and federal partners through this process here. And we would expect to bring you a much more robust update with them, together with us. But, the right-of-entry form, I just want to address that this is an agreement. There's a copy of the right-of-entry form in your packet, but this is an agreement between the property owner and Mendocino County. And as Nash mentioned, and then Mendocino County calls out resources from our state and federal partners. So, we are collecting these through Nash's Planning and Building Services process. They're not going anywhere at this point, until we work out the details with our state and federal partners. We are the collector, we're managing those. And we're making sure that we're satisfied with the next steps in place before those happen. But why we're trying to get this information out now, in the next 24 hours, is because we are really committed on your recovery team to be first in line for recovery, not to be last in line. We know, we are smaller, and we know that we need to move nimbly to make sure that we don't get lost in all of the many needs that are south of us. So, Nash has been strategic, and we've each been deploying strategically our next steps to make sure we continue to maintain the attention needed. Then, I do want to say we have a fourth big strategy this week, and it really is to build on the momentum of being invited to the MAC meeting tonight. So, we're grateful that the Municipal Advisory Committee changed their regular planning meeting to allow us to come and introduce the recovery team so far. But this is just the first of what's going to be many community meetings that we do in coordination with you. And our next two big work groups that we've been working on over the next several days are about housing strategies, and everything that's been talked about today and more. So, we'll look forward to coming back with you next week. And water strategies, and we're deploying every resource we know to call out some of the issues addressed today. But again, other, other ways that we're documenting and making sure that our needs around our waterways are being addressed at multiple levels. So, if I could turn to Nash to just talk a little bit more about next steps in debris. And Trey, actually, I think there's a really good plan around right-of-entry and some of the septic concerns that were raised by Mr. Howard today. So, I'd like to give them a chance to speak to those.
Thank you, Tammy, members of the board, Nash Gonzalez. As Tammy mentioned, from day one, I was in communication with Department of Toxic Substances to be able to get the ball rolling. Again, a lot of it, you know, is experience, a lot of it is just picking up on the momentum and working with these state partners. And as Cal OES was in the operations center, questions were being raised, and I, you know, throw out a big kudos to DTSC, because they did contact me, and we started, like I said, the dialogue, and the dialogue was, "How do we get first on the list? What do we need to do? How do we do this?" And again, everybody understands that the, that the big issue is economics. And the sooner we rebuild, the sooner you have homes back on the tax rolls, the sooner you have people back in their homes and living a normal life. But how do we get to that? Well, what we need to do is assess, clean up, and rebuild. And I think those are the three biggest priorities that Planning and Building has. And so, taking the lead on the debris cleanup, so that we can get the appropriate state partners in there, so that they could go ahead and do the assessment and cleanup. As I mentioned before, this is a very large daunting task. And so, the state government has reached out to the federal government for assistance on this. And as I mentioned a little bit ago, the state government works for us. We work for our constituents, but the feds work for the state. And so, there's a lot of partners that are coming together to be able to do this. And everybody has an aggressive approach to try to get things cleaned up by the end of the year, or the first part of the year. And so, I want to capture that momentum and stay on that momentum. And for that reason, I did remind our state partners that we do have watershed issues, and we do really need to get in there and stabilize. And they're hearing that from us, the county, that we do need answers to that. And so, we are talking with Cal OES, and again, our questions are going up to Sacramento on a daily basis. But again, the idea is, get these sites cleaned up. The right-of-entry forms are going out. In fact, I'd report that our first right-of-entry form has already been received this morning. And that will allow for the second stage, or the second step of the process, which is the actual debris removal. Again, a lot of this material is toxin because of the fire. What we're being told is that when they do come in, they are going to be removing all of the debris, and in many cases, foundations will be removed, because a lot of these foundations have been compromised due to the fire. Our building official was out in the field, and he did notice substantial damage. Now, can people keep their foundations? Again, that's gonna depend on having an independent, third-party engineer working for the property owner to evaluate it and determine if they're salvageable. But again, in most cases, these foundations were subjected to a lot of heat, and they're cracked and broken. So, can they be salvageable? Again, that's gonna be up to an engineer to make that call. But again, the ideas from what we're hearing from the Corps of Engineers, or from Cal OES, is that the Corps will come in, clean the site, and then be responsible for testing. And they will have to clean the site to the Cal recycle standards, as I've mentioned before. So, with, I don't know if there's anything else, Tammy, you want to add, or Trey?
One process in the right-of-entry form is on the back page for property owners to list specific concerns they have. They can do everything from list a concern that they have, an item that they think may have survived in their ashes and debris, and they can mark and map out where that might be. But it's also a strategy that we're gonna be educating through our community education process this week about what they can do around, you know, things like survivability of septic tanks and leach fields. So, I'll let Trey just make a few comments about some of the strategies they can do through the right-of-entry process, as they fill out that form, as well as just acknowledging that for properties that have a permitted septic system, after, I think, 1974, we have, we actually do have maps as well through environmental health, but there's probably even a quicker way people can do that through the right-of-entry process.
Supervisor Brown, your way. Okay, please proceed.
Trey Strickland, Environmental Health. So, we've heard the same issues out of Lake County, that there were some septic systems damaged by the government contractors. So, we were just brainstorming, we could ask people with their right-of-entry forms, they could submit a site map in that special comments section to show where their septic tank and leach field are. And what might be a better idea is just have them stake out and use caution tape around their septic tank area and their leach field. It'll be a very easily identifiable area for the contractors to stay out of. And our rules don't allow people to build anything on top of their septic tank or leach field. So, typically, those areas should not be part of the direct debris footprint. Particularly, the leach fields typically are gonna be away from the house. So, it doesn't seem like there's a necessity for the cleanup crews to be driving on top of these areas. And if they're, if they're well-marked, it seems reasonable that they should be able to to avoid impacting those areas and damaging those systems that might still be functional.
Supervisor Brown, and then Supervisor Kroski.
Thank you very much, and that answers about 1, 2, 3. Thank you, Trey. But I wanted to ask again about deadlines and when our lack closes. Do the, it was my understanding, both federal and state have certain timelines, and their timelines may be closing sooner than maybe our lack. Is that true or not true?
That is not my understanding. And if there's any rumbling about a state or federal organization leaving before the 30th, we would raise that up higher. You know, certainly, we're evaluating the numbers of people being served. If only two households were coming in a day. We know, right now, there are a lot of individuals here for a single agency. So, every agency would be represented still through Monday. They may not have as many employees here as they've had at the beginning, but every agency would still be represented. And honestly, we actually had to sign an agreement that we would be open per FEMA standards up to 60 days, if that's what was needed, to serve our residents. And the college has been a great partner in acknowledging and being ready with us to stay open longer if we continue to have many households that need to be served. And we'd work with the state and our federal partners to make sure that we have the right organization staying with us. There's also a long-term plan that Carmel mentioned earlier in her report around having FEMA and Cal OES workers here for many months to come. And we're coordinating right now, because we've had an amazing group of county employees who've been the navigators and coaches there with our state and federal partners. And we're working right now on the plan of how we continue to have that coaching and caring service for as long as it takes, even if we don't have a physical center at the college, it will be connected to the services that we ramp up here with our federal and state partners on a smaller scale over the months to come.
Did you have a follow-up, Supervisor Brown?
No, I, actually, I listened to a radio program very early this morning, when I was getting ready today. And it was from Florida and Texas. And I just went, you know, about what they did and their experience, and how everybody was upset. All I've heard is absolute praise for the county of Mendocino, and how we've handled this. It's bringing tears, that's all I'll say.
Supervisor Kroski.
Thank you. I just had a couple of questions. One regarding the septic systems. So, we've heard a couple of different things, as far as some of them, you know, possibly were already damaged, or they're outside of the area of damage. But if they were damaged, is that something that's going to be part of the debris removal? If they were opened and damaged? And maybe you don't know that, but I was just curious.
If I may address that through the chair. Again, these are things that we're gonna be talking with the Corps of Engineers as soon as their representative is here. Because, again, when our building department went out, they did notice damage to septic systems. Because again, when our building department went out, they did notice damage to septic systems. There's going to be damage to components. Not all of the septic systems were destroyed, some of them were damaged. But again, we're looking at some of the older systems that are made out of redwood. We're looking at some that had fiberglass covers. We're looking at some where, for whatever reason, the leach lines were much higher than, as Mr. Howard pointed, 18 inches, because we had folks out there that had noticed sewage on the ground. So, again, we will be talking with the Army Corps, hopefully today or tomorrow, to try to resolve this issue. But one of the things that I'd like to add is that lessons learned from Lake County and some of our other counties in California that have been impacted and have had cleanup efforts is, one of the things that we've included in the right-of-entry is for people to put information on there about certain things that they want to, you know, have looked at. And I really want to praise County Council because they asked a lot of questions. They were on the telephone calls with the state and had asked, what is the latest and the greatest form? And they've also, you know, added to this to make sure that we're covering all the issues, so that we have one uniform REO so that it works, whether it's Cal Recycle, the Corps of Engineers, whomever's going to come in here. So, kudos goes out to County Council because a lot of effort and a lot of hard work went into that form. But lessons learned, we've heard the stories about septic systems, about property that was damaged, and we're trying to avoid that as much as possible. Part of our discussion with the Army Corps of Representatives are going to be, you know, we know that this happened in other areas when other people were there, other contractors. We want to ensure that that damage doesn't happen here. So, we're hearing this, we understand it, but we've already thought about all this. And so, we're going to be meeting with these folks and letting them know. We also know that there's a lot of traffic out there in social media basically saying, don't sign these forms, you don't know what you're getting yourself into. Again, as one of the board supervisors in Sonoma County yesterday was on KPIX News, basically said to people, sign it, get the government to clean this up. Cal OES went on KPIX last night and basically said, this is a free program, take advantage, otherwise, you're going to bear the financial burden of this. So, the idea is we're going to be working with these state and federal partners so that they can go ahead and address the cleanup, because it is massive for this area. I mean, 300 homes is quite a bit more than what we've ever seen in history.
There is a legitimate concern that has been raised by Mr. Howard, and although, and it's within this agreement, there can be attempts to identify and mark septic systems and leach fields and so forth. Ultimately, there is no liability to the state or anyone else who comes in and does that cleanup. And in fact, all of those agencies, I believe, are identified as agents of the county. So, whatever entity is doing the cleanup, they are an agent of the county. All of those agents of the county are exempted from any liability, no matter what destruction may take place to a septic system, an intact structure, or other items. Now, who is the operations chief? Because that's referred to in this agreement. I don't see it identified. But the operations chief may authorize repairs to a fence or a gate or a septic system. But that would be strictly at the option of the operations chief, whoever that is. So, there's a bit of a concern there, but that's kind of an eyes-wide-open thing. People would sign this letter knowing they may not have recourse if their septic system got damaged that otherwise was not damaged. A bigger concern than that, because we have Section 4, county's obligations, and it does include the reassuring statement under Section C, 4C, "Any pre-existing improvements on the property such as fences, gates, et cetera, which are damaged or temporarily removed in the debris removal process, will be repaired and/or replaced." But then, Section 5, indemnification hold harmless, wipes that out, and then it's replaced later with this operations chief may authorize. But it actually gets one step worse, because under Section 6, "No county assumption of liability for remediation." But then it includes the key phrase, "Subject to Section 4 of this permit." Section 4 of this permit says, your damage will be repaired. So, the way I read this, the county is relieved of all liability, except if there is damage to fences, gates, et cetera, done as part of the removal process. You can make the argument the county's liable because of the insertion of this phrase and subject to Section 4 of this permit. If you take that section out, the county is not stepping into the liability. So, I think there's a couple of legitimate concerns. One is, information to the public, you may not be compensated for damage, but also, we're creating liability for the county, or certainly, a strong argument can be made to that effect, County Council.
Thank you, Chairman McCollough. I was hoping Mr. Curtis would join us, but he's the one that's been working specifically. Oh, there he is. So, I'll let him explain, but again, where this language came from and why we're sort of locked in. So, if Mr. Curtis could address the board, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, just to give a little bit of context here to begin with, there are certain requirements, both under state law and under federal law, when the, this sort of cleanup is being undertaken. And this form was actually, most of the operative language was drafted by the state in conjunction with FEMA, and it had to go through a review process before it was distributed, which is the reason you're actually going to see that this form is largely identical with respect to each of the counties using it. The indemnification requirement is actually coming from federal law that's required any time that the federal aid is being provided for this sort of cleanup effort. And then, the insurance, the repayment of the insurance benefit is required under state law. And I'm not sure that I caught all of the specific questions, so if I could just sort of ask.
Well, maybe, to begin with, who is the operations chief?
I believe this was drafted with a certain amount of flexibility on that, because at the time, it was initially anticipated that it would be Cal Recycle that was undertaking the cleanup. I don't believe it was specifically identified in the agreement in order to allow there to be someone on the ground that would be making that call.
Well, if there is no operations chief, then there's no one authorized to approve repairs.
I'm not saying that there isn't one. I'm saying that it was drafted with a little bit of ambiguity, but we could take a closer look at that and talk a little bit with Army Corps of Engineers and make sure that we have someone who's designated with that function at the time that the cleanup occurs.
And in Section 6, why have we qualified the county's "no assumption of liability" with the phrase that says, "And subject to Section 4 of this permit," which does require that damage be repaired?
So, to be clear, we're talking about a difference between liability versus what repairs the county might undertake. So...
Well, no, the indemnification under Section 5 is absolute. The indemnification under 6 that protects the county appears to be qualified.
If I may make sure that I understand the question correctly, you're referring to the lack of the assumption of liability under 6 as opposed to the hold harmless in Section 5? Is that correct?
6, "No county assumption of liability for remediation."
Right.
"In consideration of the assistance county is providing to owner under this permit at no cost to owner."
Mm-hmm.
"And, subject to Section 4 of this permit, which seems to create an exception, county assumes no liability or responsibility."
I believe that language simply says that nothing under 6 is going to change what the county is agreeing to undertake under Section 4.
Well, if you want to say that, you would eliminate that phrase that refers to Section 4, and then the assumption, no assumption of liability is absolute. With this phrase, it qualifies it, rather than clarifies it. Or if you want to say specifically including Section 4.
So, I do want to be clear that what we've been, what we've received from the state and the, as reviewed by the federal government, has been, already gone through the review process that's been required. If there are specific concerns, we could take a look at the language, but I'm a little bit hesitant about a tweak that might require that process to have to be re-initiated at this stage.
Well, I wish you were hesitant about language that appears to create liability for the county. Because why is there some exception stated in here?
Chairman McCollough? If I could. So, Mr. Curtis has been involved. We've talked to all the various counties. We're in constant communication with others. One of the very first things he looked at is, can we do anything to change this language? These have been coming in sort of fast and furious. We were making sure we had the very latest so that we were getting this process up and going, and we weren't delaying it. And over and over and over again, we were told that this was non-negotiable, which I have to say is often true when you're dealing with the federal government. So, you know, we're between a rock and a hard place. Always, the concern has been in terms of protecting this county. That is the very thing we're doing. That's why we've dedicated Mr. Curtis to this process from the very beginning, because he is one of our better people in terms of reviewing contracts. And we are, again, talking to the other counties religiously in terms of what we can and can't do. So, I believe that we don't have any ability to change this language.
Let me try it another way. Did anyone ask, does this phrase create liability for the county?
I don't know that we've had any conversations about that phrase specifically, no.
Supervisor Brown.
Well, I think that's something that needs to come back when it's further looked at, and maybe by next Tuesday. I realize these are going out for people to sign, but I've also heard that other counties are using the template. And one of the people that was being interviewed on this radio program, and it was also in the news, had to do about undocumented workers and why this phrase was used in some of the documents that were handed out and people needed to sign. And basically, that's language that has been in there. It's for homeland security, is what we call it today, about ICE being able, and NIMPs in the, back in the day, being able to go over applications and pick out undocumented people. Well, they said, oh, well, we included this phase in here, or phrase, basically because that is what is actually on there. You may not see it on our website, but in the actual forms, we have to include the whole language. So, I don't know. I would, instead of grilling staff at this point, I think we need to just get an answer back on that.
Well, and when this goes to a lawsuit, and people are suing the county demanding that we repair any damage that occurred during the cleanup, this will be interpreted based on the words that are stated within this document. It won't be interpreted by anything else. So, I think that County Council should go back to the people that are telling us this is the language, and ask them, what does this phrase mean? And is the meaning of this phrase that we are exempted from 4C, or that we are subject to it?
And maybe the best way to answer that, too, is to talk to Lake County, because I imagine their form was the same. And I didn't hear, Lake County, when we had our briefing with a couple of their supervisors, I didn't hear anything come up about that. And obviously, Napa County was also involved in the previous valley fire, and Sonoma County to a lesser extent. So, you know, and my colleagues never mentioned this at any of the meetings I've been at for the Rural Counties Association or CSAC, that this was a concern for them. So, I'm just saying, we hear you. We need to allow staff to go and re-ask the question, or talk to the other counties once again, to get confirmation, to come back and report to this board.
Obviously, we won't resolve it today, but I do, again, suggest we need to go back to whoever's pushing this form on us and ask them what they think that phrase means, because you're a lawyer. I think you can see the implications of how that can be argued against the county.
Mr. Chair.
So, I'm ready to move on. Director Gonzalez.
I just want to go ahead and add something that, the phone calls that we've been on, Butte County, Yuba County, Nevada County, us, Lake, Sonoma, Napa, they were all given the same form to use.
And I can't believe no one would have raised this issue.
And what's imperative here is that we were told that the sooner the form goes out, the sooner it comes back, the sooner we can begin the cleanup. Without those forms in hand and available for those that are going to do the cleanup, we go to the back of the line.
And if I were the homeowner, I'd sign it, because the county's going to be responsible for any damage done to my septic system. So, next.
If I may, Chairman McCollough, we certainly will be going back to clarify. There also are some things around the insurance process for those individuals who have insurance. And that also is a county obligation to oversee the coordination of collecting back if someone has insurance for debris removal. So, this is provided at first. So, we are in constant communication still, clarifying the details, so we'll certainly add this to our clarification as we work out our county processes, and again, learn lessons of what worked and didn't work as well for other counties who've gone through similar circumstances before us.
Supervisor Kroski.
Thank you, Chair. I just had one question. As far, if people decide not to sign this form and not to go forward with the cleanup process and do it on their own, is there any timeline for them? That's, it is one year? Okay, I just wasn't sure. If they had a timeline for when they had to have cleanup done?
Our ordinance, I believe, doesn't it address one year cleanup after a resident has been burned to the ground?
Well, we can confirm what our current ordinance says, but we actually are in the process of making clear what the process will be for property owners who choose not to take advantage of the state and federal program. We don't have the exact deadline yet, but we know that there will be a deadline to participate in this current process, having the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers do this process. And we're right now in the process of finalizing those drafts, again, with, in coordination with our other counties and with Cal OES for those property owners who may choose to pursue this outside of their process. We hope we'll have more of those details for you next week, but that is in draft form right now.
Okay, wonderful. I just want to make sure that people who are choosing not to sign this fully understand what they're going to be taking on if they're not going to go through this program.
Thank you.
So, any concluding remarks on Item 5C? Again, thanks for all of the work that staff is putting into the recovery effort and to implementing board directives on this item, and we'll have another update next week. Thank you. With that, we'll move to Item Number 6A, discussion and possible action, including waiving the board's rules of procedure. Rule Number 27, motion to reconsider and possible reconsideration of the Board of Supervisors' action on October 3, 2017. Approving of a letter to the Army Corps of Engineer requesting assistance in addressing staffing, maintenance, and management issues at Lake Mendocino. Supervisor Brown is the sponsor, and I will go to Supervisor Brown to introduce the item, and we will hear the explanation of the rules that apply from County Council. But first, Supervisor Brown.
Okay. Okay, I just wiped out my, here, there we go. It's not working. Yes, many people viewed our letter that we originally had, and there was a lot of conversation about it as being particularly harsh in the letter to go to the headquarters in DC. And the recommendation was to do a reconsideration, point out the problems. I thought it was a well-written letter, but I can see their point as well, that there could be pushback and repercussions because it was so harsh. And so, I wanted a reconsideration of it, and because of everything that's gone on, I couldn't just bring it back as fast as I wanted to, to consider a new letter. And so, that means that we need to have the board also consider our rules of procedure, and then we would need a motion to reconsider. So, it's all within the agenda summary and open for discussion.
And I think included therein may have been the statement that the letter was held at the request of Supervisor Brown based on concerns that had been brought to her, and I concurred with holding that letter until the item could be brought back, so...
And actually, it was written in coordination with one another, with Supervisor McCowen and myself. But anyway.
And so, then to County Council for the process to put this before the board.
Thank you, Chairman McCowen. So, the first thing, so the problem here is the fact that this motion to reconsider must be placed on the agenda for the next regular board meeting, and that is our Rule 27. So, in order to reconsider at this sort of later date, the board would first have to take a vote to suspend that rule, then it needs to come at the next board meeting. And that's under Rule 33. That would require a four-fifths vote of this board to first suspend their rules, and then the next, then the motion to reconsider would come forward, and that would require a majority vote.
Well, maybe, potentially, there might be a little further suspension of the rules because the normal procedure for reconsideration would be to raise it at one meeting and act on it at the next, and I think we want to do this all together here.
Yes.
So, in that regard, would a proper motion be to waive board rules regarding reconsideration and take immediate action on the motion to reconsider and the subject of the motion?
I think that would be a proper motion. So, one, you're suspending your, as you said, the rule in terms of bringing it forward at the next board meeting, and you're also suspending the rule where you bring it up and then take action at the next board meeting.
And then, if that motion is made and passed, then we're to the item itself and it's a majority vote?
Correct.
Thank you. So, does anyone wish to move?
I'll make that motion.
Outstated. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Supervisor Jordy, second by Supervisor Krosky, related to suspending the board's rules. We will vote by the, first, is there any public comment? Seeing none, we'll vote by the button.
Motion carries unanimously.
And the item is now before the board. Supervisor Brown?
So, now we need to do a reconsideration on the approval of a letter to the Army Corps of Engineer that was dated on October 3, 2017, requesting assistance in addressing staffing, maintenance, and management issues at Lake Mendocino. And then approval of the new letter, but that's not in this motion. This is a motion to reconsider.
I'll second. Okay, so, motion to reconsider by Supervisor Brown, second by Supervisor Hamburg, and this does require four fifths, I believe?
Yes.
No?
Majority.
Oh, majority.
And then, if this passes, we're back to the original motion. Is that accurate?
Correct.
So, public comment? We will vote by the button.
Motion carries unanimously.
So, the original motion is now, and I believe it passed on consent originally.
Yes.
Do we have on record who the maker and seconder?
The original motion was by Supervisor Krosky, seconded by Supervisor Brown.
And one simplified way to do this might be if those individuals wish to reconsider their motion and have it be to approve this letter? Would that work?
I believe that would work, yes.
So, if the maker of the original motion...
I'll move to withdraw my original motion.
Okay, that's one way to do it, and you withdraw your second?
I do.
Only as it pertains to this item?
Correct.
And then, now we're ready for a new motion.
Okay. Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Got it. Doesn't have to be by the originals.
Right.
Okay, I move to approve the letter. What is our date?
The revised letter.
The revised, okay. Jeez, if I put my glasses on, I could read. Oh, okay. It just disappeared again. So, I will go over here. I move to approve the letter to the Army Corps of Engineers dated October 24, 2017, requesting specific assistance regarding issues at Lake Mendocino, and authorize the chair to sign the same.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
So, we have a motion by Supervisor Brown, second by Supervisor Jordy. Is there any public comment to the motion?
Again, Lee Howard, I guess part of it is, do you, this letter that you're sending, do you think that it will immediately help the fire victims in any way?
This was in the works before, so it's separate but related, I would say.
I would encourage you or hope that you go a whole lot further than this in Lake Mendocino. The reality is, is the number of campsites out there could far reduce the pain and the agony that is going on out there right now and do things. I mean, a congressman and your senators and everybody else, I would think, would fall right into line with their request to immediately, immediately open up Lake Mendocino Campgrounds to fire victims. Thank you.
I don't disagree, and without objection, we would encourage staff and Supervisor Brown to follow up on that issue. So, further discussion?
In the works.
Again, motion by Brown, second by Jordy. We will vote by the button.
Motion carries unanimously.
Do we have any further business to...
Yes, can I say one thing?
Oh, yes.
I know, we all feel we're a county board of supervisors and all county residents are constituents, but I want to thank my colleagues, and again, staff, for all the attention and help to my constituents in the first district. It's been a tremendous event. And actually, I don't know if I announced this here, because I did earlier today, but we've been listed as, on the California map, number 16 in the most destructive wildfires in the history of the state.
On that somber note, we are adjourned.